Okay, let me just get my notes. Okay, we got everybody? Seven. Great. Okay, it is Monday, June 1st. Happy June, everyone. Happy Pride Month. At 5:03, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Palau City Council.
Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Here.
Councilmember Philseth?
Here.
Mayor Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Niss?
Here.
Councilmember Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you so much, Clerk Minor. Our first item is a closed session item. Item number A, conference with labor negotiators, including Utilities Management and Professional Association Palo Alto, SEIU Local 521, SEIU Local 521 Hourly, the Palo Alto Police Officers Association, Palo Alto Fire Chiefs Association, and IFF Local 1319, and the Palo Alto Police Managers Association. This item is scheduled from 5:00 to 6:30. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Sound moved.
I'll second that. And let's please vote. Councilmember Cormac?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois?
Yes.
Councilmember Philseth?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss?
Yes.
Councilmember Koo?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously. So council will now go into closed session for about 90 minutes, and then we'll return for agenda changes, oral communications, and our regular calendar of items. And just if anybody is listening yet, we'll have some announcements during council member questions, comments, and announcements, which we're bringing up to the proportion of the agenda during city manager comments. And finally, I should have mentioned, the last page of the city's agenda has instructions on how to join this meeting remotely. So please refer to those if you need to join the meeting. All right, let's go into our closed session. Thank you all. As returned from closed session at 6:52, I apologize, we're about 20 minutes late. There is no reportable action from item number A. For agenda changes, additions, and deletions, item number eight, discussion and direction on the housing affordability requirements for the planned housing zone, that has been removed will be heard at a later date. Any other changes or deletions, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe the council member questions, comments, and announcements will be heard immediately after the city comes, excuse me, after the city manager comments.
Thank you. So for the rest of the evening, after this, we're going to go to oral communications, where any member of the public can speak to an item not on the agenda. Then we'll have our minutes approval, the consent calendar, city manager comments, council comments. And I'm sure many of us have have some thoughts to share with the community and each other. And then we'll go to our one action item and adjourn after that. So at this time, I'd like us to go to oral communications. Any member of the public may speak to an item not on the agenda for this evening. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak on the oral communications item. And Clerk Minor, if you'd please help me inviting our guests in to speak and share their thoughts.
Sure. Terry Holzmer? Terry Holzmer, it's your turn to speak. You have two minutes. Terry, where did you go?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead, you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, council members, for this evening. I think it is vitally important, very important, to bring to your attention for immediate action, your awareness of the MTC's Plan Bay Area 2050, and what it means for our community here in Palo Alto. Largely under the radar, and with no real public involvement or input from our own city representatives, Plan Bay Area 2050 is being pushed forward, even while we're coping with a national pandemic emergency. A non-elected regional body, MTC, continues its assault on local government and residents, while following a methodology based on a jobs growth model that today seems totally outdated, given the fact that many companies in the Bay Area are encouraging their workers to stay and work from home on a consistent basis. With that in mind, it's critically important for you, as our representatives, to read the letter and detailed information from the West Bay Citizens Coalition on Plan Bay Area 2050. It's in your council packet today. It's in set number three, starting on page 10. This information will give you some...
We lost Mr. Holzmer?
We, we did. Let me see if we can get him back. Terry, are you back?
Do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Terry.
Okay, I'll just say my last part. It's vital, like the councils in Cupertino and Los Altos already have, to agendize a public discussion of Plan Bay Area 2050 before you leave on summer break. The public deserves to know what Plan Bay Area will mean to them and its impacts, especially on the arena mandates that are coming this fall. Please, please, I urge the council, to take this matter up and agendize this issue for a true public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Our next speaker is Beth Rosenthal. Beth, go ahead. Beth, go ahead. You may need to unmute on your side.
I just did. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. Following up on Terry's comments, I want to say that there has been no public discussion of Plan Bay Area 2050. The city council needs to put this item on their agenda to educate the public on what is being proposed. The city of Palo Alto should weigh in on this plan before it moves to the implementation phase. The MTC A-Bag model is a job-based housing plan imposed on cities without their consent or input. Median home prices in the Bay Area are the most expensive in the country. High-income workers bid up to compete in this market. Insufficient affordable housing has made it necessary for many workers who provide the support for communities, teachers, firefighters, janitors, restaurant workers, to live far away from their areas of employment, making for long commutes, severe traffic problems, and resulting air pollution. It is not profitable for developers to build low-income housing, and increasing expensive housing options can never fulfill the demand. Therefore, the cost of housing will continue to increase and will not address our growing homeless population or the housing difficulties for low-income workers. There is a limited amount of land on which to build in the Bay Area. Aggressive job targets should not be imposed by regional agencies. The fact that the job picture may change dramatically as a result of COVID-19 needs to be factored into any housing plan. The public must be informed and allowed to weigh in on any and all of these issues before they find themselves subject to decisions imposed upon them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenthal. Our next speaker is Andy Reid. Andy, go ahead. Andy, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. This is Andy Reid speaking. To continue the conversation about A-Bag and Rina numbers, it is urgent that Palo Alto take steps to influence the methodology that results and housing requirement dictates, which don't look at the bigger picture and are extrapolated strictly from past jobs growth, not looking at jobs-housing imbalances and alternative dispersment methods. Should we give up our local control over how we choose to grow our town and instead embrace urbanization, wiping out our once-single-family zoning because we are a very popular place for companies to have as a business address? The unfortunate circumstance of a deadly virus has allowed for data gathering and analysis about remote work, which had already been trending over the last few years. Polling by Global Workplace Analytics since COVID shows that the same percentage of workers felt satisfied with their work at home as they did before when they worked at the office. A wide majority polled would like to continue to work from home at least two to three days a week, and felt they were fully productive at home, experienced less stress, more flexibility, and better work-life balance. From the employer's perspective, offering work from home widens the applicant pool and increases the attraction and retention of talent who may not want to live where their office is. Facebook, Twitter, Microsoft, Apple, and Square are all on record, offering remote work into the future. The long-term effects of this short-term pandemic may well widely influence office use and accumulation in our area. Last week's Silicon Valley Business Journal quoted Alex Karp is considering downsizing volunteers' footprint in Palo Alto. The citizens need to determine our own land-use decisions, including building more below-market-rate housing in Palo Alto, and not reacting to state-imposed numbers based on flawed methodology. Please agendize a public discussion on jobs-housing imbalance before A-Bag's Rina numbers are concretized this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reid. Our next speaker is Paul Machado. Paul, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fine and council. These times in many ways are unprecedented. A recent business article stated job losses are like nothing we have ever seen. A recent Palo Alto staff report on the COVID virus said, "The future is unpredictable." Anyone paying the slightest attention will hear predictions from a V-shaped economic recovery to the prediction the economy will be on a ventilator for a long time. Despite these legitimate concerns regarding an uncertain future, A-Bag MTC continues to plow ahead using the same extremely rich jobs model they used before the pandemic to arrive at Rina numbers that affect not only our city but the neighboring cities of Silicon Valley as well. These mandates may result in penalties for our cities and other municipalities. Furthermore, Rina numbers cannot be adjusted for eight years. Therefore, I implore the city to agendize an action item regarding the A-Bag MTC Plan Bay Area 2050 process as soon as possible. The precedent for such action has already occurred in nearby cities where both the city council and residents were allowed to discuss this, allowed to discuss publicly this extremely important matter. Thank you and stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Our next speaker is Susan Keen. Susan, you may have to unmute at your end.
Okay, now you can hear me?
Now we can hear you. You have two minutes.
Great. Okay. The current MTC A-Bag model focusing on jobs growth has been out of touch with reality previous to the pandemic, and focusing on increased growth in already job-rich areas. It historically has not been cognizant of the effects that this model has had in the West Bay, which has made the area unlivable for many. It has resulted in heavy congestion and increased pollution of our air quality. The model has resulted in huge amounts of infrastructure costs and precluded development of affordable housing because of the resulting high land costs driven up by more and more commercial office development it encourages, also because the public's not privy to the discussion conclusions. It leaves out pertinent information about how this model has adversely affected our cities. The model needs to be modified, or preferably completely rethought, and view of the changes COVID-19 has caused. Actually, I think the people in these regional committees would be well aware of the negative effects of this policy as they live here, but maybe not. With a pandemic, the model is even more nonsensical, acting if nothing has changed. And then it has changed. And I also talk about the tech and people moving, wanting to move out of the area. It's losing population, not gaining. Public transit is down. More importantly, the public needs to be brought into the discussion of these effects as they're experiencing. Living with this model is most valuable to create something new that fits the new environment. COVID-19 has provided us with a whole new playing field. Regional planning must look at what is appropriate and possible for each city. The city council needs to ask for a formal public discussion of these issues before the Rina mandates are set this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Our next speaker is Greg Schmidt. Greg? It's your turn to speak. You may have to unmute from your end.
Got it.
There you go. You've got it. You've got two minutes.
MTC is steadily moving forward on their Plan Bay Area update. In September, they approved a methodology that focuses on job growth in jobs-rich areas like Palo Alto. In December, they voted to drop any discussion limiting local job growth. In March, they decreed that COVID would not have an impact on their aggressive job projections. In the summer and fall, they will proceed to work with HCD on arena process that locks in the job numbers and proceeds to housing units required. The state code asserts that slower growth in local jobs may be the most effective way to a healthy jobs-housing balance. This is the last opportunity this council will have to raise that state code issue. Meantime, MTC is proceeding with their in-house process that will result in unattainable increases in our Rina numbers. This council is supposed to represent the residents of Palo Alto, yet you passively accept the aggressive job-growth plan of this non-elected body. Now is the only chance you have to demand that MTC follow the government code to improve our jobs-housing imbalances. Do it now, or explain to us in the fall why you refuse to hold a public meeting on this critical issue. Thank you.
Thank you, former council member Greg Schmidt. Our next speaker is Miranda Lee.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have two minutes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fine and council. My name is Miranda Lee, and I am a senior at Palo Alto High School. I'm a part of, and speaking on behalf of Vote 16 Palo Alto, a student-led movement aiming to lower the voting age to 16 for city council elections. We've been working on this movement for the past almost year, and we're aiming to get a measure on the ballot through a city council vote for this upcoming November election, and wanted to come and speak at oral communications today to bring awareness to this cause and bring it to the council's attention. This is legislation that has worked in the past. In several cities across Maryland, the voting age was successfully lowered for local elections, and 16- and 17-year-olds are voting for city council and mayor. In nearby Berkeley, the city council passed a measure lowering the voting age to 16 for school board elections, and they're currently working on implementation. Previously, our goal for Vote 16 with this was to lower the voting age to 16 for school board elections in Palo Alto. However, when we spoke to County Council James Williams, he told us that having the school board or city council lower the voting age for a school board is not legally sound because school districts are an entity of the state, and the legal structure for Palo Alto is complicated as our district and city boundaries don't align. We wanted to share a few arguments in favor of Vote 16 Palo Alto with the city council today, including how lowering the voting age to 16 will improve democracy, voting habits, and civic engagement, and give voices to young voters who care about the city. We will also address concerns surrounding the maturity and knowledge of 16- and 17-year-olds with respect to voting. The president and vice president of Vote 16, Rachel and Antonia, will speak after me regarding these arguments. Thank you for your time, and we really urge the council to strongly consider and support Vote 16 Palo Alto.
Thank you, Miranda. Our next speaker is Rachel Owens. Rachel, you have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rachel Owens, and I am a junior at Palo Alto High School and the president of Vote 16 Palo Alto. I want to continue where Miranda left off. So as many of you know, one of the biggest problems facing our democracy at this moment is poor voter turnout, especially among younger age groups. While this is a multifaceted problem, one way that our community can increase voter turnout and create lifelong voters is by lowering the local voting age to 16. At age 16, the majority of students are living with their parents at home in a stable environment. At this age, they are under the positive influence of their parents' voting habits and have a stable environment to cast their first votes in local elections. On the other hand, at age 18, students are at periods of change in their lives, often moving away to college or next steps, and often moving away from home. This shifts their primary societal influence from their parents, who have already established their voting habits, to their peer group, who have not. In this period of change, students are much less likely to cast their vote in their first election. Research shows that voting in one's first election is crucial to establishing a lifelong voting habit. And as at age 16, students are in a stable environment with the support of their parents and schools, this is a much better time for them to vote in their first election and establish this voting habit. Another benefit to lowering the voting age to 16 for city council elections is the increased civic engagement for youth. Allowing 16- and 17-year-olds the right to vote will make the government classes at Palli and Gunn more applicable for students and allow them what, and allow them to put what they've learned into action. This will result in more educated and civically engaged students, students that will become lifelong responsible voters. Lowering the voting age to 16 for city council elections will allow 16- and 17-year-olds to learn how to become responsible and consistent voters while they are still in high school. This will aid in increasing voter turnout, as well as ensuring that young Palo Alto voters learn how to stay informed and make educated decisions while voting. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next speaker is Antonia Mao.
Hi, can you hear me?
Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Antonia Mu, and I am a junior at Palo Alto High School. To continue Rachel's point, we are aware that there is concern surrounding how 16- and 17-year-olds may not be informed enough to make a decision on city council members. We will work with the school board and teachers at Palli and Gunn to make sure local politics and issues pertinent to Palo Alto are introduced in government classes. This will allow students to be more knowledgeable about topics that matter the most to them, and help them make educated, informed decisions on which candidates to vote for. In most states, 16- and 17-year-olds are allowed to drive, work, and pay taxes, and in some cases can even be tried in adult courts. Research shows that 16- and 17-year-olds are developmentally mature enough to vote. Studies show that cold cognition, the ability of an individual to critically analyze and make logical decisions independent of emotional involvement, reaches adult levels during the mid-teen years. As responsible voting is dependent upon cold cognition, 16- and 17-year-olds are just as developmentally equipped to vote as 18-year-olds. We believe that 16- and 17-year-olds deserve the right to vote because young people are affected by local political issues just as much as anyone. Students in Palo Alto are affected by decisions made by the city council every day, from police and fire department budgets, teen services, changes in transportation that impact things like bike safety and environmental sustainability policies. High school students have the benefit of a different perspective on how Palo Alto's operations are impacting young people, as well as the maturity and insight into how we can improve the current policies. Allowing 16- and 17-year-olds to vote in city council elections will force candidates to listen to and address the concerns of all their constituents, and improve democracy and civic engagement in our community. We urge the council to strongly consider and support Vote 16 Palo Alto. If you would like to learn more about Vote 16 or have any questions about our campaign, please email us at vot16pa@gmail.com or visit our Vote 16 Palo Alto Facebook page. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Antonia. And our next speaker is Bob Fisk. Bob, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Beth.
Go ahead. You have the background from the other part of the meeting, and it's slower, so go ahead.
On a background repeats, whoever's speaking.
Yes.
Anyway, let me say
Turn that down.
Be counsel. This is a call to Palo Alto and
Other part of the meeting, and it's slower, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is a call to Palo Alto.
So, so folks, if you want to speak on oral communications here, it's really important that you mute any channels, radio, YouTube streams, where you may be listening to this broadcast, otherwise we get kind of that repeat echo. So, Mr. Fisk, it's your turn, but please be sure to mute any other sources where this may be playing.
Want to speak on oral communications here, it's really important that you mute any channels, radio, YouTube streams, where you may be listening to this broadcast, otherwise we can get kind of that repeat.
Mr. Fisk, I'm going to mute you for now and try calling you afterwards, once you have muted everything. Our next speaker is Stacy Olgado. Stacy, go ahead.
Well, thank you. You can hear me?
Yes.
No echo.
No, you have two minutes.
Thank you for your time. I'm Stacy Olgado. I've lived in Palo Alto for 25 years. I'm speaking tonight in support of turning our downtown commercial streets into walking streets with a focus at this critical time on expanding restaurant capacities. It's the right thing to do. Palo Alto needs to step up, but this is not the time to be timid about the scope. The plan to temporarily shut down a few city blocks falls short. We have an obligation to do everything possible to keep our downtowns vital in the face of the challenges we know will be substantial. We have seen how our downtowns, both California and University, have become overwhelmingly restaurant-centric. We cannot let them fail. We've read predictions that up to 50% of all restaurants simply won't recover. If they don't survive, these streets will likely have many vacant storefronts, sad reminders of better days. I'm here tonight asking for bolder actions. Fully 50% of our University Avenue downtown restaurants will not benefit from this four-block closing of University Avenue and six-block closure of California Avenue. I'm asking you to spread the reach to include three more blocks of University Avenue and one block of side streets that have restaurants, specifically Ramona, Emerson, and Bryant. These restaurants pay a premium to be in downtown Palo Alto. Please let us fold them into our recovery program. An overwhelming majority of business owners and residents support closing streets and doing everything we can to help our restaurants survive. Having lived here for 25 years, I know that this united support is rare. I'm asking you to be bolder in your plan. It's simply not possible to do too much to keep our downtowns vital in these extraordinary times. Thank you for considering a broader, more exclusive reach, as we do the very best that we can to keep our downtowns vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olgado. And our next speaker is Stefan Heck. Stefan, go ahead.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and council members, as a 30-year resident of Palo Alto, I thank you for your actions to balance our city budget and to support our local economic development and business community in these tough times. Our downtowns, as the last speaker just said, are an incredibly important part of a vibrant community, and the quality of services that we all enjoy living here. With restaurants now limited to six-foot spacing and limited occupancy, all our stores and restaurants are on the brink of bankruptcy. And I ask the city council to support opening both Cal Ave and University to outdoor dining and to reach And I ask the city council to support opening both Cal Ave and University to outdoor dining and to retail for the summer. We have seventy-nine percent of all the essential businesses in favor, seventy-five percent of retail in favor, that is non-restaurants, our hotels, uh, many of our other businesses in town. Uh, many US cities and international cities have already gone this route, both locally here, San Francisco, San Jose, Santana Row, Santa Monica. Uh, and the data from Europe shows retail sales will actually rise through the increase in pedestrian traffic. It's not the cut-through car traffic that actually drives shopping. It's the local uh employees, residents, that make our downtowns vibrant. And we have plenty of garage capacity with seventy percent utilization normally, less than that now, obviously, in COVID times. So the two-to-four-minute walk to our garages uh still makes downtowns very readily accessible, even with blocked-off streets. And we've seen a big increase in biking and walking already, uh, and this is a further way to improve our cities to be safer, cleaner. I know a number of planning activities are already underway by city staff to develop options. And I urge you to support the opening in time for June fifth, which Santa Clara has set as a date to encourage outdoor dining. Take advantage of our great weather, sunshine, our beautiful towns, and do it safely so we can all avoid any further pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Heck. Our next speaker is a phone-in caller with the last three digits on the phone of nine-one-seven.
Hi, this is Windsor Delandock. Uh, I wanted um uh, uh, I really add that our city uh honors the memory of George Floyd tonight. Um, and the best way to do that, uh, I think is uh to talk about our city uh putting our house in order. We all know that uh uh, many other cities have problems with police abuse and brutality, but our city does too. Uh, it happens in our city. And it's a systemic problem. It was created uh and nourished by racism, and it still is. And you all know that. We've been dealing with it quite a lot in the last uh couple of years. Uh, you as our elected officials on the city council deal with it in closed session, a little bit in open session, but mostly closed. It gets dealt with quite a lot in our local papers. And with uh this terrible situation with the death of uh, 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 George uh Floyd, um, it, it's just tragic. I know that the uh police chief and the pastor Coloma uh have issued a statement, but my statement's a little bit different. Um, I think that the best way to honor this tragic death is to insist that uh uh several things, and that you folks on our city council as our officials need to take a much, much stronger position on this. Um, uh, I think I have two or three recommendations. One is you need to prioritize uh an individual that makes a credible brutality claim uh overprotecting uh uh the city's uh seeming denial at all costs. Um, that uh the city might have to pay out some money. Uh, they uh seem, our city seems to grow, go into a protective crouch, which uh sends a really bad message. It sends a bad message to the uh people in Palo Alto. It sends a bad message, I think, to the perpetrators of brutality, uh, some of which uh I'm convinced are still on the uh police, uh, in the police department because there's a record of repeated complaints of abuse. Um, and uh I think uh, uh, so the priority should go to people making, uh, certainly they have to prove it, but I think that uh, uh, the priorities are wrong. I also think that if you, the police have to be forced, the police chief has to be forced to follow the police manual policy as to audits, the timing of audits. Do you know that you folks are to see them every quarter? You're to get reports every quarter? The public uh then uh have, they have to be released yearly? Um, the city attorney, the city manager have no right to hold them back?
Ms. Delandock, your two minutes are up.
Okay, and I want to just say one last thing. Um, that's the way to honor the death of this man is to by taking uh, is by actually taking action. And I'm, and to make a statement that we are a zero-tolerant city for police abuse and brutality for any reason against anyone, because there's no excuse for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Judy Kleinberg.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, starting this Friday, excuse me, starting this Friday, the county is allowing outdoor dining, subject to strict distancing guidelines. Restaurant tours have warned that safe table distancing rules make it imperative to be allowed to have outdoor seating. Governor Newsom's acknowledged this by stating that outdoor restaurant seating should be a priority for local jurisdictions. The Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce conducted two surveys concerning temporary street closures for pedestrian mall pilot projects on University and California avenues. Surveys were done of all types of businesses in these areas, and the results show an extraordinarily high percentage of support for partial street closures on both streets. University Avenue businesses were strongly in favor by sixty-one percent and twenty-two percent in favor with some reservations such as delivery issues for a total of eighty-three percent in favor. Cal Ave businesses were eighty-one percent strongly in favor, twelve percent with some concerns, for a total of ninety-three percent in favor. Sixty-three percent of University Avenue respondents and seventy-nine percent of Cal Ave respondents agreed that the street closure should be all days of the week, responding in agreement that anything less would be a confusion to customers and not a good trial. Sixty-six percent of um, excuse, yes, and then respondents also were supportive of sidewalk tables and parlets as a way for the city to help restaurants reopen successfully. While there are those that have concerns about street closures, and a small percentage are strongly opposed, the survey results strongly reinforced the calls by both residents and businesses for the city to help commercial districts recover from the closures by partially closing these two streets. Restaurants are the linchpins of our commercial districts, and with the decrease in car usage and parking demand, this is the time to allow them to open in a financially sustainable way. It's a good time for the city to expedite the approval of these street sharing trials, and based on the surveys showing strong support from the business community, we ask you to approve this temporary fix to an urgent situation. Thank you.
Thank you, former mayor Judy Kleinberg. Our next speaker is Bob Fisk. Bob, can you hear us? You need to turn off the background programs.
It's not, it's not me, Beth. It's uh, it has to do with your, with the way you're conducting the meeting.
If you're on Zoom, it does it right, but if you're watching on um.
No, I have everything off. No, it's not me. It's okay on television.
If there's a five-to-ten-second delay on all the other programs, with the exception of the Zoom meeting.
So, Beth, uh, can I just talk?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so this is a call to Palo Alto in the Crescent Park neighborhood to join. So this is a call to save the hundred-year-old Newell Road Buckeye Tree located, located at the east end of four-seventy-five Newell Road. It was likely planted by the squirrely uh Cyrus grissias fourteen gang in response to a dispute over territory in nineteen-twenty before the Crescent Park subdivision was laid out. Generations of children have hidden toys in its nooks and crannies and enjoyed its white flower spikes and hand-shaped leaves and planted its nuts in pots to grow seedlings. Please save this native tree, California Buckeye, Eschelis californica, from removal at four-seventy-five Newell Road. Please contact me, Bob Fisk, for more information at savenuelbuckeye at gmail dot com or see photos at the website savenuelbuckeye dot wix dot com. Thank you uh for letting me uh repeat.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Our next speaker is Jeremy Erman. Jeremy, go ahead. You have two minutes, Jeremy.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I'm very concerned with the way that the city council and staff have proceeded with a new lease for the Coverly Community Center. This has been very little discussed. The council voted to take it out of the short-term parking lot without, as far as I can tell, knowing information has not been released to the public through the city of Palo Alto. As far as I can tell, the only reason I think I've even seen the lease and what it contains is because the school board put it on their agenda last Tuesday. It's a terrible plan. The city has picked and chosen what it keeps from the squirts. Um, it keeps, the friends of the Palo Alto libraries get to keep uh their portable where they sell children's books, even though it's on the district land, I guess, because not only do they pay rent to the city, but they also make money for the city. The city likes that. But apparently everyone else, the tenants are being kicked out, except that the city is retaining the theater and the auditorium, the gym, and several classrooms. Apparently, these are, it rents out constantly to various tenants. So the permanent tenants are being kicked out, and temporary tenants get the, can even pay more money. This is very unfair. And the worst aspect of this is that the city has said it will keep the theater, but literally only the lobby and the auditorium. So all of the dressing rooms and the backstage and everything that is needed for groups to rent the Coverly Theater will not be allowed under this new lease. Um, this is really abominable, so I really urge the city to have a special meeting to discuss this because you cannot retain the Coverly Theater and not have the dressing rooms. The only dressing room that might be maintained is one that's for four people. Um, these dressing rooms have lights and costume space and equipment and pianos that have to be used with the theater. So it's clear that the city made this decision without even knowing um how the theater is used. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erman. Our next speaker is Jamie Rappaport. Jamie, go ahead. Jamie, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Great. So I am calling to uh express my support for Build Alternative One for the Newell Street Bridge. Um, as I look at the uh, the decision-making process, uh, I believe that not enough consideration was given to the traffic impact. Um, I think Build Alternative One, uh, like Alternative Two addresses the flooding situation.
Mr. Rappaport, if this is Adrian Fine, if I can intervene, um, we're actually considering the Newell Bridge later tonight. Um, it's item number seven, scheduled for about seven PM. I know it's now behind schedule. Um, but I think you intend to speak on that item, so uh, I'd encourage you to maybe give your comments on, on the Newell Bridge at that time.
No problem. I apologize. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Liu. Jennifer, you have two minutes.
Hello. Um, yeah, I, um, as you know, that there are lots of for looting, demonstration, and violence across the Bay Area. I'm really concerned about it. Many cities enforce the curfew around eight o'clock something. We, with those cities having the curfew, the protesters have less place to go. If Palo Alto is open, then those people will come to Palo Alto, and people are getting very worried. Uh, also with the layoff announcement for the police, that's going to make the thing, make things even worse. I'm just thinking maybe we should, uh, I would ask Palo Alto should also have the curfew, just like many other cities. I hope you can give a good consideration for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and our next speaker is Jonathan Erman. Jonathan, you have two minutes.
Great, I think I'm unmuted now.
You are unmuted. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Great. Following up on what my brother Jeremy said about the Coverly lease, you've got to take a look at this because you cannot split the theater building ownership-wise. The rooms, the other rooms in that building are used as green rooms for groups that uh use the theater. Uh, there's also the issue of the Palo Alto Chamber Orchestra, which it seems like for some reason you want to kick out um because you say you don't have enough money, and yet it seems to me we need to come together in these times and figure out what we can do to help everyone. I mean, this council spent hours debating the issue of banning flavored tobacco in Palo Alto, but it seems to me right now that the issue of unemployment is a much more serious issue, and you're willing to put businesses out of work and put people out of work over the issue of the flavored tobacco when those businesses, when there's no, when the, the issue is not that these businesses are doing anything illegal or that people are getting it in an illegal manner from these businesses, so why would you make these people suffer? You've got a budget plan which it calls in this time after we've all been sitting around for, for months. Um, you know, and businesses are going under and people, whole industries have been shut down, and it seems like all of, everybody, you know, in, in the city who, current, all people frankly making these jobs, I think, all have jobs or making decisions where they're deciding that people are going to be out of work, cutting jobs in the city, which seems at this time where people need them more than ever, you've got to figure out some way to focus on the issue of unemployment because that seems to be a very serious issue. And yet you just talk about numbers like you're just some landlord who just counts the digits, and I think we're a lot, I think we're a lot more than that. Um, and there are ways to make things work out and come together, and I think you've got to really. Jonathan. And you know, if you're worried about buying lunch, you know, free lunch, I'm. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker.
Um, thank you so much. Thank you to everyone who joined us. Sorry for some of the connection problems, uh, but we, as always, appreciate your input and feedback. Um, Mr. City Manager, one quick question. Somebody raised the issue of uh the information about Coverly. Can we just uh double-check that the informational report about Coverly is published on our website? I remember it was provided to us uh during budget meetings, but if we could just make sure it's on the web as well. Thank you. Okay, um, so that completes oral communications. Uh, we now move to minutes approval. Um, are there any speakers on the minutes?
No, I do not have any.
Okay, um, I'll move the minutes of May fourth and eighteenth.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Um, let's vote on this. Um, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, we next move to the consent calendar, uh, items two through six A and six B. Uh, we have one member of the public who wishes to speak on consent. Um, Clerk Miner, if you'd please help me with Ms. Huang.
Sure. Lily Hong, it is your turn to speak. You want to speak on the consent calendar?
Excuse me, I, I think I, I want to talk to about the uh, curfew. I, I, I don't, I, I just come in, maybe I'm late.
Yes, you were late. That was under oral communications.
Oh, okay.
Um, do you want to let us continue?
Let's, let's just go for it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Lily.
Um, yeah, I, I, I would like to ask uh your uh consideration to uh uh impose the uh curfew uh to the city of Palo Alto and because all the surrounding, not all the surrounding, a lot of the surrounding city already imposed the uh curfew. And the city of Palo Alto may be the target for not uh curfew. And uh, and I, I really love this city, and I hope there's no violence uh happening in our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. So we return to council for the consent calendar. Um, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, um, registered no on three, five, six, and six A.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other no votes or motions on the consent calendar?
I'm happy to move consent.
I'm happy to move consent.
Thank you. So moved by Councilmember Cormac. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Phil Seth. Okay, uh, so the consent calendar is moved. If I don't see any other hands, let's all please vote on the motion. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
Uh, I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Koo.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka voting no on three, five, six, and six A. Uh, Councilmember, the the floor is yours.
Okay, so um on action item three, which is the tree trimming, uh it's a fourteen million dollar contract. Um, I read that has a ninety percent increase in price, nineties, like nine zero, almost a hundred percent increase in price uh for the first year, which to me is incredible, given that it's um you know, we're in like in the depression right now. We have twenty-five percent unemployment. So how could our price from the last year grow ninety percent? It just seems incredible. Um, and uh I read that there was negotiations, but I I just find it really a bit of a stretch for the price to go up so much for tree trimming. Um, so I can't, I can't accept it. I think we need to do more negotiation. I realize that the city has the option of of um uh, you know, stopping the contract and going somewhere else, but to approve a contract like this, that's so much more money when we're suffering a budget deficit and we're looking to lay off people and cut a bunch of services on people, just doesn't seem appropriate to me. Um, on uh item five, um, you know, the the challenge I have with this one is that um, all of the bidding was done in November. And I think since COVID nineteen, since the economic depression, prices are a lot lower. So I think um, you know, it's two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. I think that we should rebid this. Um, anything pre-COVID, we should rebid this in November. This is way before the state of emergency, way before the recession and depression started, but way before we had twenty-five percent unemployment, forty million people unemployed. Um, I think we could probably get a better price than we got. Um, and then on six, I've already known this and still voting no on it. I I believe that a lot of people in the city don't realize that their utility bills are going up, um, albeit maybe not a lot for residential, but for restaurants, it's five hundred dollars. So I don't think we want to curtail people's ability to complain about this. Um, I I think it's it's hard to get the word out. Um, people probably not been related until they get the first bill, but five hundred dollars to some restaurants, which are, you know, probably going well business or really struggling is a lot of money. So I I just don't think that um uh, showing the statute of limitations on this is appropriate thing to do during these tough economic times when people are suffering and having trouble paying their bill when they're losing their jobs, when trying to make a decision of whether they should pay their rent or pay their employees or whether or even whether it's just stay in business. It doesn't seem appropriate to uh shorten the time that people have to complain about uh utility rate increases. And then on on six A, um, so six A, uh, my my challenge with this is, you know, when when our uh employees retire, uh, they get eighty to ninety percent of their pay and as well as the healthcare. And so we're giving this three thousand dollar bonus as incentive for people to leave, which, you know, perhaps they would leave otherwise, just retire. Um, and so I I I wonder if we're going to save anything. Um, right now we're having a short-term cash flow issue. Uh, this thirty thousand dollars is probably like over half a month, five hundred and eighty, maybe six hundred thousand dollars. And this actually worsens the problem. So I didn't see in the staff report any calculation as to what does this look like financially in terms of, um, is this going to actually give us more room um on the on the budget? Um, I suspect not. I suspect this actually caused more issues, but again, I don't see the calculation, so I can only guess. Um, and and I think a lot of people, a lot of employees in the city, especially ones near the retirement age, I think I have more faith that ones that are close near retirement, maybe already maxing out on their retirement, that they would consider leaving even perhaps on their own uh for the sake of trying to save their younger colleagues' uh job. So I I don't think we need to put the city in a bigger hole than we than it's already in. Uh, I think we could count on the faith of our city employees to try to do the right thing. So I I can't support this one either.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we now move to city manager comments and then council member comments.
Yes, Mr. Chicago. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me just do a quick transition here. Um, as I actually have a a serious topic I would like to uh make some comments on, but that's just in transition for the record. I do want to acknowledge uh the really exhaustive staff that's uh, I'm sorry, exhaustive effort as staff has made on each one of the items that are on your consent calendar. Uh, I I can speak directly, having been involved with each one of these items, uh to the additional work that staff has done in order to really reflect uh the cost consciousness uh that uh is represented in each one of these reports, uh whether it be from the uh extensive write-up in uh item number three related to the tree uh uh trimming uh expenses in order to provide critical service necessary uh to maintain safety around our utility lines uh to the professional services provided under uh item number five uh and the uh additional negotiations that was done uh there based on prior council uh feedback on the importance of ensuring that those were cost-effective. The extensive uh work that was done in redoing the utility rates uh to reflect the uh, again, the recognition of the severe economic uh period that we're in. And finally, uh the uh full briefing that the council has received on the impact of the uh police officer firefighter's uh retirement incentive program. So I just want to acknowledge uh the extensive work uh that has been done by your professional staff in each one of those items and reported uh to the council. Uh, so that said, uh, let me do a a transition here and um be able to share uh uh with the council and the community a statement, a joint statement on behalf of myself, our police chief, uh Robert Johnson, uh as well as notably uh two community leaders, our Reverend uh Coloma Smith, the City of Palo Alto Human Relations Commission Chair and pastor of the University AME Zion Church of Palo Alto, as well as Pastor Paul Baines, Palo Alto Police Chaplain and Senior Pastor at Saint Samuel Church in East Palo Alto. So if you uh would bear with me, uh it's really my privilege to be able to uh share these thoughts uh that were developed and contributions by each one of us. Truly intended to be a message of community and of hope on behalf of all of us. Uh, in these uncertain and unprecedented times, our unified message is to elevate and uplift the themes of local and national community peaceful protest, sharing loss, anger, and the call for change through equity and inclusion. Our prayers and condolences are with George Floyd's family during this challenging time. And as a nation, we can only imagine the pain that they are enduring. We recognize the calls for systemic change that this and other tragedies demand. We must stand together in response, calling for inclusion through peaceful exchange and dialogue. We condemn the actions and inaction of the police officers in Minnesota, and we do not tolerate or condone this type of behavior in Palo Alto at any level. Their actions have had a tremendous impact on all police officers serving communities like Palo Alto all across our great nation. No police department is immune from public scrutiny or should be. Even here in Palo Alto, the actions of a few officers in the past may have caused our community to question their commitment to the law and policy. However, through mutual respect, trust, and a deep regard for the constitutional rights of all, we remain more steadfast today than ever to can continue to support our community through these uncertain times. We are working collaboratively with our regional partners, actively monitoring events on the peninsula and continuing to do our best to keep our community safe during this time. With that said, these issues transcend public safety to how we as individuals respond in times of conflict. We urge our community to unify together to honor George Floyd's life through equity and respect. We are in this together and through this discourse, we have an opportunity to effect real change. Our city has a long, proud history of supporting all kinds of demonstrations and allowing people to legally and safely assemble to express their opinions peacefully and respectfully. We're honored to do our, to help do our part, and we fully support the rights of those who are peacefully protesting and honoring the memory of George Floyd and others. As recently as yesterday, there were two such peaceful demonstrations, including today, where members of our community turned out to express their views. Peaceful events such as these and their necessary calls for change should outshine the acts of violence taking place in several communities. Violence and destruction are not the answer, and we urge our community to continue to come together in peaceful conversation. We appreciate your being safe and be well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chicago. Thank you, Chief Johnson, Reverend Smith, and and Pastor Baines. We we appreciate the message. Um, so moving to council member comments, questions, and announcements. Um, I need to note that it's it's important for us to address the current demonstrations and anger surrounding the death of George Floyd in Minneapolis. Um, we grieve for Mr. Floyd and his family and all those others injured by or senselessly lost to racism and police violence. The police and other public safety groups are here to protect and serve, and that means everyone, every single one of us. Palo Alto will continue to hold its officers to the highest standards and insist that all people are treated with the dignity and respect that each of us deserves. In America, there is no place for systemic racism and oppression, and yet time and time again, we experience these tragic events, and we all experience them differently. We cannot ignore that blacks and people of color in America suffer prejudice and inequality. Black communities and families are less well off. Black lives are not valued equally in this country, and it's a stain on our nation's soul. People of color have also been disproportionately harmed by the coronavirus. In my mind, it's the right thing for us to do, the right thing as Americans for us to do uh is to advance racial justice. Um, the Constitution and the city protect our right to protest and to voice our anger and disappointment and to turn that protest into political change. We have so much work ahead of us to create a society where everyone is equally valued and has equal access to opportunity and justice. We will work one day at a time. At my synagogue, there's a prayer for peace. Um, and there's a line that ends with that I I really love. Um, and it goes, let us hear only the cries of young people and dance in celebration as the whole world comes to be filled with peace. Until that time comes, though, uh, we do hear the voices of anger and sadness, and we share their outrage and grief across this country. Um, before I turn to my colleagues, I'd like to ask us to observe a moment of silence. Thank you all, and thank you to those listening and joining us tonight. Mr. Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, thank you for those words, Adrian. Uh, I'd like to add my voice and I expect the voices of the entire council to that letter that was put out by staff and the two pastors. Uh, it was done quickly, and I'm sure the intent was for it to represent the mayor and the council as well. Um, and I want to personally express my feeling of sorrow for the loss of life and the violence in Minneapolis and across the country. And watching that that video of George Floyd was completely horrifying. Um, all lives matter, black lives, you know, all lives. And uh protect and serve is the focus of the vast majority of policemen. Um, we are all here to serve our community, and we'll continue to focus on serving all of the community as we reflect on this tragic death. Um, because this is a time for comments, I'm I was going to make a couple other comments as well. Um, we held our lottery to support small business, and we gave out initial ten thousand dollar grants to fifty local companies, but I think we had nearly two hundred applications, so we really need private donations. Um, so please give if you can. Um, and also please shop locally as much as you can. I mean, I know Amazon's convenient, but our local merchants and restaurants really need your support. And then finally, I just wanted to note that there were some really important things on consent tonight. Um, we accepted a challenge grant to add staff to work on rental protections, affordable housing preservation, and that was all done through a grant, and I want to thank staff for that. And then finally, we um we're moving forward with our fiber network planning. Uh, finally moving forward, I'm expanding this fast fiber network to the residential areas. And it's one of the few cities without a smart meter program, uh, which we've had to delay with the budget cuts this year. This network planning is an important first step to to make us a smart city. And with more people potentially working at home, I think this could be a a very fortuitous step for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I also just wanted to say a few comments. So I I I saw also the video of George Floyd and pretty horrific and um, you know, I think peaceful demonstration is important, but we certainly don't want violent um demonstrations. Uh, you know, several callers called in about possibly having a curfew. Uh, I don't think anything too violent has happened in our city, thankfully, but I do wonder whether there's any wisdom in trying to have a curfew to make sure um things don't get out of hand. Um, I don't know. I know this is not necessarily an agenda, but I just wanted to say that comment because I know some other cities have contemplated that. And maybe we should as well. I I think there was some activity around Stanford um shopping center. Um, you know, but I think it's important that um, you know, business owners don't feel compelled to have to board up the windows. I think some actually already are. Uh, and so I I think we don't want these tough economic times to be even tougher. Um, because I think uh that that makes it that much harder for people to restart. And so I think we need to think about how do we enable um, enable these guys to reopen up safely, both safely in terms of COVID nineteen, but safely and just in general. I I know that staff has been working really hard on on the idea of uh allowing restaurants to open up into the streets. Uh, a lot of restaurants, I've talked to a lot, a lot more restaurant owners in the past week, a lot of them are very interested in this idea. Um, and I know that there are, I think, a couple conversations that happened today. Um, and uh, we heard several speakers that came in that called in, uh, were very supportive of this of this idea. And so, you know, when the county does lift the shelter in place, uh, I think it's important for us to be ready. Um, I don't know the exact configuration or or how this should be set up so that, you know, we can still um, allow people to pick up, uh, still allow uh people to get through. But um, I I've had, I think, two or three, no, actually, no, actually, I probably have four. I've had four, four office hours on this topic. And so there's a lot of support in the community as well. And um, so I don't, I know if this needs to come back as a agenda item or whether staff will just continue to drive it forward, but um, I think it's important for us to be ready and to be quick about it because longer our retail restaurants are unable to conduct business, especially business that is profitable. Um, it's going to be really hard for them to contribute to the city's budget, which we're really having a hard time with right now. So I think it's important for us to try to get everything in place, so when this is lifted, we can move forward and the rules are clear. Um, and uh, and if there's something that that staff needs, you know, city council to weigh in now, and I think we should genize it quickly because I don't think we want it, wants to take, you know, six months to figure out because I think it'd be too late for a lot of the restaurants and businesses and retailers in our area.
Thank you, Councilmember Tanaka. Um, quickly interjecting, uh, we do have an agenda item for this next week. Um, it's not been posted yet. Staff is still working on it. And as the city manager wrote us um a few days ago, you know, we we do have the ability to begin implementing some of this stuff by Friday. Of course, today's news from the county is is brand new and fresh, so I I know staff has to evaluate it, but that's the goal. Um, Councilmember Cormac.
I want to thank the city manager and the mayor for their remarks and associate myself with that. Um, in February, I went to the exhibit at the Art Center, which is called Rooted Trees and Contemporary Art. And the most memorable installation there was by an artist named Azusena Hernandez. Um, Hernandez, excuse me. It's called the Ember Series. And it was faces um etched on slices of wood all around the room of people who had died. of people who had died as a result of police violence based on racism. And the hardest part about that exhibit is there was an empty one at the end. And now tragically, we know that name, which is George Floyd. And that was a discussion I had with the artist then, so I want to say that there are all different ways that people are experiencing this and ways that they will process this. And people are allowed to feel sad and angry and to call for change. Absolutely. I condemn the actions and inactions. Thank you for those very thoughtful words. We do have to do this one day at a time, but there are years and decades of centuries of work that we have to do to fix the years and decades of centuries of the problem. And that's the only topic I want to discuss this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Niss.
So thank you, both mayor and vice mayor for what you said. And, you know, all, all of my heart goes to the, the family of Mr. Floyd. The family having to watch that tape must be one of the most horrific things that could happen in your life. The sadness of what is happening that's really troubling me tonight is that the violence has begotten such violence. And the violence is happening in our city right now. Well, we're all sitting home in our, in our, wherever we're sitting in our house. My daughter said that Stanford is barricaded and police are swarming the Stanford Shopping Center. It is very frightening. I happened to be in Santa Monica yesterday when the protesters were gathering. And while the protesters were gathering, unbelievably, the looters were out on every, almost every street in, in Santa Monica where there were stores and the looting was so heavy. I, I, you know, Councilmember Cormac said it right. It's going to take years and probably, probably decades and centuries, but this is, this pattern is so frightening. I won't do this tonight, but at some point, I'd like to ask the chief to talk about this. I heard one chief today from a city in the Midwest talking about how he actually kept the mob essentially from becoming, from becoming totally incensed and taking over the city, and it was quite impressive. So I think it's one of the things that we should keep close to us and remember how quickly this can happen. It was so fast. It was last week and it's now, and we're sitting here. And earlier tonight, Adrian, you said you heard sirens. It's, it's just stunning to me. So again, my heartfelt condolences to his family. And once again, I hope it's something we work on as a council. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo.
I want to echo all my colleagues' comments. Thanks to everybody for everything that you said. I also would like to send my condolences and sympathies to the family. You know, the letter that the chief and the pastors wrote, as well as the city manager, was, was very right in saying that, you know, there is things that we have to work on on our own here in the city, and we need to address that. And I appreciate everything that Chief Johnson and all the police officers have been working toward. At the same time, I would really like to ask for the city manager also to reassure our community by saying a few words of, or even for the chief to say a few words about where, where we are and just to give them reassurance because obviously tonight, you know, with some of our community members who came out, you know, really asking perhaps we should have a curfew and so forth, maybe that's, there is some, some fear in our community, and it'll be great if you guys can reassure all concerned.
Thank you.
After councilmembers submitted your comments, I could ask the police chief to comment as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thanks very much. I'll be brief here. I, so thank you very much for the letter, the pastors and the chief and the city manager. I think that's, that's exactly right, and I would associate myself with that as well if I can. You know, what we saw in Minneapolis is just appalling. It's not supposed to work that way in this country, and yet it seems to, too often. A lot of people saw, there was a, there was an essay in Medium.com by former President Obama today. And he said that, you know, it's all well and good to follow this stuff at the national level and pay attention to sort of, you know, what's helpful or not helpful coming out of Washington DC, but that the bulk of the responsibility and the heavy lifting on this problem, not just, not limited to sort of, I mean, the specific topic is, you know, how do you do law enforcement that protects people and also honors everybody's rights? But what kind of society do we want to be? What are our values? He said that the, the heavy lifting, the bulk of the responsibility actually lies not at the national level, but at the state and especially the city level, because that's where so much of this happens. And I think that's right, and, and that's us. So as one of the, one of the public speakers tonight put it, I think, you know, you know, we need to internalize this and make sure that, that, that we do this the right way here in Palo Alto, and everybody else needs to do that in their city too, and that's what it's going to take. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, councilmember. Chief Johnson, if you, if you have any comments or thoughts to share, we would welcome them.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and residents joining us tonight. I'm assuming you can hear me okay, right? Yeah, thank you. I hope you'll indulge me for a couple of minutes. I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight, but I do have a few comments to make, and I do feel they are important for you and the public to hear. You know, as mentioned, our, the state of our country is unlike anything we've experienced before, and especially in my 34 years as law enforcement. We're in the middle of a global health pandemic, and now, as was stated earlier by the city manager, we're dealing with civil unrest throughout our country and our region. And as a police chief, first and foremost, I also want to acknowledge and express my deep sorrow for the family of George Floyd. This is a tragedy that just shouldn't have happened, and it's not acceptable. You know, I got to say, as not only a police chief, but as a father, a son, a brother, to watch that and to know that could have been somebody that I loved and is dear in my life would be heartbreaking. And I can understand that the loss of a loved one went so senseless and unnecessary, and especially in the context of our country's history and the current pandemic highlighting social disparities has outraged many and would just cause for such anger. And the death of Mr. Floyd, trust me, frustrates me personally because I agree with what was just said by Mr. Phil Seth. Our country is failing to address the core systemic problems that we've been facing for years. We have made such little progress as a country in correcting many of the racial and socioeconomic disparities that contribute to the device breaks in communities that we're seeing right now. And I apologize for my emotions, but I'm torn because also as a police chief, it saddens me and causes me deep concern about the welfare of the thousands of men and women in the law enforcement profession who have always served their communities with professionalism and respect and are being violently attacked defending lawful protesters and the property of others while also trying to maintain the peace throughout our country. And to be clear, I'm not condemning by any means the excessive use of force we've witnessed by officers, and nor am I blind to the fact that every profession, including ours, have officers who have acted inappropriately with unacceptable consequences. I do, however, believe truly in my heart that a vast majority of law enforcement professionals aim to serve with respect towards all. I'm also concerned for our communities right now. As many of you have mentioned, our citizens need and are entitled to a safe space to voice their frustration and anger in a peaceful way. And without having those opportunities disrupted by outsiders and individuals whose sole intent is nothing more than to vandalize and take advantage of our cities, looting and destroying property during this sobering time. You know, police departments right now currently are in a very, very difficult position because we're both being targeted by protesters, and also we're trying to keep things peaceful for the nonviolent protesters and keep them safe. Responding to civil disturbances like those that we've witnessed over the past week is very complex and a difficult situation for any police agency. It requires a fine balance of allowing space for the range of emotions and reactions that need to be expressed, but while working to prevent the escalation towards violence and property destruction, as Ms. Niss has mentioned, Councilmember Niss had mentioned, that's being done throughout our country. With that said, I will say locally, I want to acknowledge my very strong appreciation to the residents of Palo Alto who thoughtfully coordinated demonstrations, as the city manager mentioned, not only yesterday, but also throughout today, that remained peaceful and were a great example for others to follow. But in doing so, I also want to commend our command staff and our patrol personnel who have ensured that these demonstrations were afforded the space for expression and also provided them oversight to help keep everyone safe. As you heard from the city manager, this city has had a long, proud history of supporting all kinds of demonstrations and allowing people to legally assemble and express their opinions peacefully and respectfully. And we're honored as a police department to help do our part in making sure that happens. That is the tone that we've always set and we try to accomplish when we're working with event organizers. It's a collaborative approach, it's purposely designed into our special event operations. And yet, as we are witnessing across our country, and yes, even in Palo Alto, what starts off sometimes as a peaceful demonstration can evolve into civil unrest. You know, both police, I will say this, both police in the community are accountable for public safety. Without question, the police must be held accountable by the community, and the community must also be willing to hold itself accountable as well. You know, and I really have to give credit to somebody I highly respect and share a few words from him. It's the former chief from East Palo Alto, Ron Davis, who many of you know. I highly respect him. He was also the director of the United States Department of Justice Officer Community Oriented Policing Services, and also the executive director for the President Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. And I remember him writing in one of those documents that "Real reconciliation can only occur when it starts with the truth. No matter the level of discomfort it may cause, the truth may hurt, but selective ignorance is fatal." And the truth is, as a previous speaker highlighted, significant racial disparities still exist in our policing and criminal justice systems. And only once we accept that even these basic truths that we have to accept, only then will it become easier for us to work together than remain bitterly divided. Chief Davis also highlighted in his work, many of these systems and practices in policing today have been in place long before we entered this profession, as also one of the council members mentioned, decades long, that have enforced discriminatory laws and oppressed black Americans who are still being and feeling oppressed at this very moment. So here we are in the midst of this terrible global health pandemic and once again facing this brutal, violent reality of racism. So how do we move forward? Well, many of you know how I feel about mindfulness and meditation, but that's for another day. But I would like to share some words from a nonviolent communicator and a mindfulness mentor, Orin Soffer. The truth is a turning point on this path when we understand that pain and heartbreak in life is not an obstacle, but rather fuel for an awakening. When we understand this deep in our bones, the resistance softens. We can turn willingly towards the truth, even when it's hard. It takes resilience to open our hearts to what we know is difficult. We need some ground, some strength and buoyancy inside to face the brokenness of our world. I don't have all the answers. I don't even have a crystal ball to tell you where this is all going, but I can assure you as the chief that this community, the Palo Alto Police Department, will do everything in our power to protect our citizens, our property, to provide that safe space where people can feel peacefully express their frustration and anger. I'll continue to work with our advisory group and our outside auditor so we can have a system that provides protections for those we serve, will hold personnel accountable when necessary, and will provide transparency designed to enhance public trust. We know that only through this type of self-reflection and constant evaluation can profession, can this profession improve the services that we provide our community. The failure to learn from our experiences, both our successes and our setbacks, increases the likelihood of repeating mistakes and contributing to the loss of public trust. We're committed to protecting the rights of all people peacefully to demonstrate, while also protecting the people who live and do business in our community from violent crime and vandalism. Our goal has always been and will continue to be to build trust, enhance our relationships, and protect civil rights for the community we serve. I know I was long-winded, but I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you so much, chief. It's appreciated. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and thank you to all my colleagues as well. Okay, that concludes council member questions, comments, and announcements. Our next item is an action item, but I'm going to suggest we take a break, maybe 10 or 15 minutes to 8:30. I know that puts us a little behind schedule, but I think we could use it. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Staff, ready to get started?
Yes, I believe we are all set, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let's see. I'm not sure. John Lay is here, looking among the names to see where you are on the screen there. So I hand it off to John. I would just note that this is a momentous item here. This is certainly one of the longstanding, long-awaited projects that have been on our books for quite some time, so pleased to bring this forward for council consideration.
Yeah, good. Just before we get started, so this is item number seven, a quasi-judicial hearing on the Newell Road Bridge Replacement Project listed there. Let's quickly maybe go for council disclosures, and then we can move on to a staff report. Councilmember Cormac.
Nothing to disclose.
Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, nothing to disclose.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Nothing to disclose.
Myself, nothing to disclose. Councilmember Niss.
Just riding across the bridge count.
Thank you. Councilmember Koo.
I think about over a year ago, I had a coffee, a meeting with Janie Farn. Yeah, nothing that hasn't been brought forward in the reports now.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka.
I've had a couple office hour sessions on this, both of which are recorded on Facebook, so you guys can see it entirely, but pretty much what was talked about was actually what's in the staff report.
Thank you all. Okay, let's turn it over to staff for presentation, then maybe some quick clarifying questions from council, and then to our members of the public.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. I'm going to introduce Claire Raybold. She's a senior planner. She's the one who's been managing the project from the planning side. As you know, the city is an applicant on this project, so you're also going to hear from Michelle Jeremiah. She's a senior engineer from the Public Works Department, so the two of them will lead you through a presentation. Claire, go ahead and take it away.
So I'm just going to share my screen. One second. Are you guys able to see the presentation?
Yes, it may help to go full screen.
Yeah, you're.
Yeah, I'm, I'm bringing it up. There we go. Is that viewable? Oh, great. Okay, perfect. Good evening, council members. Mayor Fine, Vice Mayor DeBois. This is Claire Raybold, senior planner and current planning. I'm here tonight on behalf of planning to present the Newell Road Bridge Replacement Project, which crosses San Francisco Creek along Newell Road between Edgewood Drive in Palo Alto and Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto. The city's Public Works Division is the project applicant for this project. So as Jonathan mentioned, I'm joined tonight in making this presentation by Michelle Jeremiah, the Public Works Engineering Project Manager. So just briefly, the proposed project before you tonight- And so just briefly, the proposed project before you tonight includes replacement of an existing two-lane bridge with a two-lane bridge along the same alignment. The new bridge would have a shared ten-foot-wide vehicle bicycle lanes with four-foot shoulder for bicycles. And the new bridge would also have five feet of dedicated pedestrian access on each side of the bridge. The project raises the existing bridge and removes the abutments in the stream, allowing increased flow capacity beneath. It also requires that a portion of Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto and Newell Road in both jurisdictions be raised. It includes retaining walls in some locations to support the raised road. There are two striping options that were presented as part of the project in the environmental analysis. This, these are referred to in the staff report as Option A and Option B. Option A includes included raised five-foot-wide sidewalks and a four-foot-wide shoulder for bicycle use and ten-foot-wide sharrows, which are shared vehicle bicycle use lanes. Option B includes a nine-foot-wide shared pedestrian bicycle path and ten-foot-wide vehicle lanes. The City of Palo Alto's Transportation Division, as well as the City of East Palo Alto's Public Works Engineering Division, recommended Option A because it is a more common design and allows for a better transition into existing and planned bicycle paths in Palo Alto and East Palo Alto. So just to briefly show you, this is a rendering of what the view would look like from Palo Alto. And this is a rendering of what the proposed project would look like from East Palo Alto. And I'm actually going to turn over the presentation at this point to Michelle Jeremiah to provide a few more details on the project, the project background, and the grant funding for this project. Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Claire. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As you can see on the slide in front of you, there are a couple of pieces to this. First, I'll break down the bullet number one, functionally obsolete. This bridge was deemed to be functionally obsolete for a couple of reasons. Primarily, the bridge lacks a sidewalk, an excessively compliant sidewalk to allow pedestrians to cross. It also has an angle at the approach that exceeds seven and a half percent. There are trees that are on the proximity of the approach, as well as the slope that create the line of sight constraints. In addition, the lanes are only nine feet wide. Functionally obsolete is to eliminate all these constraints the project has. Because of the functionally obsolete designation, Caltrans has agreed to pay up to eighty-eight and a half percent, eighty-eight point four seven percent actually, out of the Highway Bridge Program. And Caltrans, excuse me, Santa Clara Valley Water District is providing the local match, eleven point five three percent. In the past, when we've gone through this project, we have done a lot of outreach. Started off in 2012, 2015, several meetings that have occurred during that timeframe, including identifying the Needford EIR. We also followed up with scoping meetings that we narrowed down to eight alternatives, along with identifying how we selected out of those eight alternatives, the five that would be advanced. In addition to that, we followed through. This basically lives your list of all the meetings that have occurred. Next slide, please.
Sorry.
So with the background provided, I wanted to also identify several of the outreach that has taken place as well. It has come to our attention through previous meetings that the community has not heard. We disseminated information through various outlets. So during the scoping meeting through the EIR process, also during the EIR circulation period, which was extended. It was originally intended to be forty-five days, and we extended it to sixty to obtain more comments. We attended and participated, held six public meetings. Four of those public meetings were intended based on the EIR requirement. Two additional were based on requests that were made from the public. We've shared and met with the neighbors, all the four adjacent neighborhood property owners. We posted as required all the advertisement and noticing that it's required per SEQA. In addition to that, we've done more reach through emails, through next doors, and even as you can see on this photo, posting a sign near the project site at both cities. Next slide. Several key considerations. So one of the questions that has come up, or comes up often, is the funding needs. So currently, this project is funded and approved by Caltrans at the percentage shown here, up to a million. That is for the environmental documents. This is for the CEQA clearance, everything that we've done up to date. It also has allocated funds for the design, meaning the actual construction documents, preparing the plans necessary to advance the project. In addition, the exhibits needed to complete the right-of-way, the easements that would be required in order to complete this project. Easements are required. Most of them are temporary construction easements, and those will be addressed through a conditions of approval. In addition to that, this staff report includes language for a contract amendment. The contract amendment that is currently in front of you is simply to extend the milestone dates, the deadlines, that the design construction plans will be prepared, and also to complete the right-of-way, the permitting piece, going into the regulatory agencies. So that is the contract amendment ahead of you. The contract amendment does not include any additional funding. In the future, though, should Caltrans allow us to continue and provide more funds, we will come back to council for additional allocation for funds as it becomes available. In addition, we foresee that there might be a need to come to council at a later date to share more information as we progress with the project. As listed here, we have encroachment permits and access easements. This is to reference, we believe we need four temporary construction easements and the adjacent properties. And that is simply in order for us to build the improvements in the public road right-of-ways, both in East Palo Alto and also in Palo Alto. The encroachment permit, we've been in discussions with East Palo Alto to obtain an encroachment permit to do work in their right-of-way. Next slide. One of the biggest components, and I think this has been brought up many times, I wanted to kind of walk you through the slide and show you what the map shows here. As you can see, the blue line crossing through the screen, bottom left, moving to your bottom to your upper right, that's Samosquito Creek. All the circles represent the flow capacity, the constraints at each of the known bridges. As you can see, El Camino has a capacity of eight thousand CFS cubic feet per second that can pass. Middlefield is the limited one, it's shown as seventy-two hundred CFS. This was a slide that was put together in 2019. We have since evaluated. It actually passes more, closer to seventy-five hundred CFS. Pope Chaucer has the limitations of fifty-eight hundred upstream in University Avenue, sixty-eight, and Newell Road, sixty-six hundred. So the reason that we're proceeding with this project is Newell Road Bridge has to be replaced so that we can make the improvements upstream. From a hydraulic perspective, we replace the downstream portions first and improve all the channel capacities before making upstream improvements. So we're proceeding with Newell Road. These calculations are based on a model that Santa Clara Valley Water District prepared, where they analyzed the floodplain in this area for approximately from the drainage area of forty-five square miles, what drains through this creek, and analyzed where flooding would occur, where this water come out of the creek. So as it's been referenced in the past, and by many of our residents, Pope Chaucer is where floodwaters exited and drained in through the city. Next slide. In addition to flood control, this project also proposing to do improvements, as we've discussed, and regarding to improving the safety over this bridge for transportation. So right now, as it is, you can see the bikes are sharing the lane, but there is no designated sidewalks. So this project will provide multimodal access needed to complete the project, to replace this bridge, and provide access to cyclists, pedestrians, and vehicles. With that, I think I'll turn it back to Claire.
Thanks so much, Michelle. So I was just going to continue to talk briefly about the conclusions of the EIR and what we are requesting of you tonight. So the EIR analyzed a wide range of impacts on the human and built environment, including impacts on such resources as noise, air quality, and biology. I know that there were some questions raised by a commenter today about concerns about air quality analysis that was conducted and the impacts on their, on their property. I do want to note that the EIR did have a full analysis of air quality, greenhouse gas, noise. And those, that analysis was quantifiable analysis. And the conclusions of the EIR found that all of these impacts were either less insignificant or less insignificant with the incorporation of mitigation. With one exception, the EIR did find that during the bridge construction phase only, there would be a significant and unavoidable impact at the East Crescent Drive University Avenue intersection in East Palo Alto. Because traffic that would typically utilize Newell Road Bridge would utilize alternative creek crossings. It was assumed that at least half those trips would reroute to the nearest available creek crossing at East Crescent Drive University. There is no feasible mitigation to address this impact. Due to site constraints, the bridge cannot be retained during construction of the new bridge. And this impact remains significant, even if temporary. Therefore, council must adopt a statement of overriding considerations in order to approve this project. That statement, a draft of that statement, is provided as part of the packet. Overriding considerations for the project are outlined in that resolution. And consistent with the policy considerations we just discussed, the project is integral to reducing flood hazards for both the city and the region. It also addresses existing roadway deficiencies and provides multimodal and ADA compliant access, consistent with Caltrans' design standards, state requirements, and local goals and policies. The resolution also describes in detail why this alternative was selected in lieu of other alternatives, which I can go into more detail on as requested by council. So the recommended motion tonight, staff recommends that council adopt the resolution certifying an environmental impact report for the Newell Road San Francisco Creek Bridge Replacement Project, making the required findings and adopting a statement of overriding considerations and a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, all in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. We also ask that you approve the record of land use action, approving the proposed architectural review application based on the findings and subject to conditions of approval, as well as approve and authorize the city manager or his designate to execute Amendment Number Three to contract, that contract number with NV Five, to update the schedule of performance and extend the contract time to December twenty twenty twenty-one to complete the design phase of the project. Following the certification, we actually received Caltrans' NEPA certification last week for the project. So this actually has been completed now. So the CEQA would follow the NEPA. Following that, we would continue coordination with wildlife and water resource agencies. And later this fall, we'll submit the regulatory agencies for permits. Concurrently, we'll continue to work with East Palo Alto on a cooperation agreement and neighboring property owners on the temporary construction easements that are needed to construct the retaining walls. One permanent easement is needed on the private parcel that extends over the creek. The permanent easement is for future maintenance of the bridge. So we will continue to work with Caltrans and Valley Water on the funding and construction logistics as it affects the upstream project. And with that, I will turn it over to council. Oh, sorry. I just want to also note that we have several people here tonight with us. So we have, on the applicant side, Brad Eagleson, Director of Public Works, Holly Boyd, Assistant Director of Public Works, Rafael Reyes, Senior Engineer in our Office of Transportation, Russ Nygaard from NV Five, the engineering firm designing the project, and Jennifer Anderson from ICF, the city's environmental consultant. And all of these people are here tonight to answer any questions that you may have, especially technical questions.
Attorney Stump.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make one comment about the proceedings at the ARB. When this project went to the ARB, there were a couple of comments from ARB commission members about their own interest in seeing the project proceed. The ARB did vote unanimously to approve the project, but we looked into whether there might have been any impermissible conflict of interest in those proceedings due to the statements about personal interest that were made. And we have satisfied ourselves that there is no conflict of interest. There was no conflict of interest with the hearing at the ARB. And the reason for that is that the, as Project Engineer Jeremiah explained, the Newell Road Bridge project on its own does not mitigate flood risk to surrounding properties. Rather, it is, one, it's a necessary precursor, but will require additional projects and public works to occur in the future in order for that flood risk and associated flood insurance costs to be mitigated. And in the, in understate law, that type of attenuated impact does not create a conflict of interest. So just wanted to satisfy council that that issue has been resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. So tonight before us, here's the recommended motion. A couple different parts there. Let's go to council for quick clarifying questions, and then we'll go to the public, Vice Mayor DeBois.
Yeah, thank you, staff, for that presentation. How old is the existing bridge, and how long is the new bridge supposed to last?
I can answer that. So the existing bridge is over a hundred years old. It was built in nineteen eleven. It's, the proposed bridge is going to be similar in nature in concrete. I'm assuming another hundred years or plus.
But you said it's over its intended lifespan.
It has had to need to be maintained. So we constantly maintain it in order to protect the bridge and to protect the structure.
Okay. And how long will the construction take?
We estimate the construction within the creek, within the creek, we're limited to a five-month window. We can only work between June and October because of the regulations. The actual construction, striping, retaining walls, landscaping, all the rest that remain outside, it's about a year and a half. So total, about a year and a half.
And what will the construction hours be?
So the construction hours residential will have to comply to both, not only Palo Alto, but also East Palo Alto.
So do you know what those are?
I would have to check with transportation internally. I'd say it's between nine to five, Monday through Friday.
Okay, yeah, the noise mitigation, you know, said it had to be quiet until six AM. I just wanted to see if work would start at six AM, or you're saying probably nine AM?
Right.
Okay.
One of the reasons being because of traffic, you know, we don't look at it from a COVID-nineteen perspective, rather we're looking at it from how is this road used? It's a collective, we have to account for that.
I just, I just want to know, I believe the hours are actually eight to six for the city of Palo Alto, if I recall correctly. Typically, it's dawn to dusk, but definitely it's after eight AM, or after six AM, as you noted.
Okay. And then, you know, we did get some messages from people living very close to there. What's being done to mitigate construction impacts on nearby residents?
So I'll start, and Michelle, you can add to this as you see fit. But there are quite a few things that we are doing to reduce impacts on nearby residents. There are requirements for noise controls. There are requirements for noise controls to have sound barriers for any noisy activities. We're also using only Tier Four equipment to reduce air quality impacts on NOx NOx emissions, nitrous oxide. And those are kind of the key things for air and noise. There there was also some concern related to parking. This is not an environmental impact under SEQA, but it is analyzed under NEPA. And so this was a concern from a community impact. And the project is not going to be permanently impacting more than one unmarked parking space. However, we have a traffic mitigation plan for the construction that would work to reduce impacts on adjacent residents with respect to parking and traffic in terms of access to their site during construction. I don't know if, Michelle, you want you want to add to that?
If interested, I could contribute additional information regarding construction logistics plans that are required, sending out notices, our contracts would be hard to notify the neighborhoods in advance. I mean, a lot of planning. One of the advantages we have is we can close down Newell Road in the east and Palo Alto site and use a staging and storage in the middle of the road.
Is that the main, yeah, I did have a question about staging areas. And you guys mentioned the easements, or, you know, are those easements very close to residents? Or, like you just said, are you going to use the road for a staging area?
We would use the road for staging area. The retaining walls are behind the sidewalks. So based on proximity to the neighbors, it varies. It could be anywhere from fifteen to twenty feet behind in front of a structure, a building or house.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just a reminder, everyone, these are quick clarifying questions. Councilmember Tanaka.
Good preference there. So I'll ask a quick question. So I'm looking at the slide. There's no number on it, but the project overview that shows the the dimensions of each of the sidewalks, the trees, the bike lane, et cetera. Yeah, if you can bring it up. And I've only actually crossed that bridge on my bike when I go to Home Depot, and I think the East Palo Alto Bridge, so I've actually never driven it, just only biked it. But so one question is, I know that there's been some concerns from some neighbors I talked with about, you know, potential traffic impacts, which is, I think, some of the motivation for them to want to keep it more narrow. And so one question I have for staff is, right now, is this a Cheryl? I understand that the bike's a Cheryl. Why not put in a protected bike lane? I know it's very, very common on bridges for there to be protected bike lanes, but that would maybe perhaps provide the traffic calming necessary. And then and then also give some protection to the bikers that have to cross that bridge. And so I was wondering if you could talk a bit about that in terms of what was the thinking about using a Cheryl versus just trying to go with a protected bike lane on this bridge?
Yeah, so the intent of the Cheryl was to, one of the other key comments we were hearing from residents was the concern about the width of the bridge and the concern that they wanted to have the most narrow bridge possible. And so the intent of the Cheryl was to meet Caltrans standards while also having the most narrow bridge we can possibly have. So the Cheryl's would provide a ten foot shared vehicle bicycle area and a four foot shoulder for the bicyclists to use.
Yeah, I think the idea behind, I mean, and maybe you could tell me more, but I think the reason why some of the neighbors wanted a narrow bridge is to prevent, you know, I guess there's some concern about like mass amount of traffic coming through this or cut through traffic coming through this if the bridge is really wide. I think that's the motivation. So, I mean, I think if there was a protective bike lane, and maybe, I guess, maybe you could tell me, is that, because that seems to be what the motivation was in behind a narrow bridge.
I think that was the motivation behind some of the commenters' concerns. I think there was also concerns from other commenters with respect to our impact on the on the creek itself and trying to reduce impacts on biology and the number of trees that had to be removed. So that was also the intent of having the most narrow bridge possible. I do want to actually note that based on comments from members of the public, as well as our Planning Commission and Architectural Review Board, we did go out and do additional studies of, I believe they were done, Michelle, was it in October?
August.
August, okay. So August of last year, we went out and did additional studies to determine how many bicyclists are using this project or this bridge, and whether that number has changed due to the addition of the Bicycle Pedestrian Bridge in East Palo Alto. And the numbers had increased, but they were still substantially lower than what we would typically implement a Class Two bike lane for.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ness.
If you have already addressed this, and I somehow didn't hear it, my apologies, but how long will the bridge be down roughly? A year and a half?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I heard you say that. However, if that's my usual way of commuting, where are you sending me instead?
So we would look at adjacent roads for, depending on how you method of commuting. For example, in a vehicle, we would look at, touch, see the map that Claire's pulled up here. We would send to Embarcadero in West Bay Shore or up to University Avenue in a vehicle.
Okay, just the usual way.
Exactly.
Yes, nothing unusual. Okay, and just, you'll be signs that indicate that this is the detour, whatever else it may be. Yeah. You said in a vehicle, but is there any other way? I mean, what else were you? There's no way for bikes to cross there when the bridge is down, so.
Right, no. I would say it varies depending proximity where they're headed to. You know, there's other other bike lanes, bike bridges, crossing university, crossing Samskider Creek in multiple locations. So I would say, you know, from Menlo Park, there's different routes, I guess, you can go with through.
Okay, but you'll indicate that someplace, wherever that happens to be. Okay, I don't have many. I was on J P A last year before Councilmember McCormick came, so I remember discussing this, and I think the neighborhood is going to be delighted to have it. I think it'll surprise people that it's down for that long, which I imagine might end up being two years, as these things sometimes do. And but it'll be terrific addition when it's done. And the only other thing I might say, which is something that Greg approached very gently, but I do know that people are concerned that there may be far more traffic crossing that bridge than there has been in the past, even though I know it went through the traffic study and so forth. But but I don't think that the neighborhood is really going to be totally comfortable until they see it, until they see it done. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Koo.
Thank you, thank you. So could you walk me through the funding? Because I see that, yeah, if you could walk me through the funding for Alternative Two and Alternative One, you know, I would like to see the differences there.
So on the.
Yeah, please.
On the presentation, we have a slide that shows the funding associated with Alternative Two. So a bigger way to that. So the funding associated with this project, the cost of construction for Alternative Two is estimated to be approximately nine, nine and a half million dollars. This estimate here shows eight and a half, eight point one million contributed from Caltrans, one million, approximately a million contributed from Valley Water. That's the cost associated for Alternative Two. Unfortunately, I don't have a slide for Alternative One, the cost associated with that. But one of the things that we need to keep in mind for Alternative One is the traffic signals are quite expensive. We would need nine traffic signals. Those are in order to allow the residents, yeah, it's, it would be the, I see the confusion. We'd need nine traffic signals. The three of them would be located on Newell Road in Woodland Intersection. Two of them would be, or three of them, excuse me, would also be located on the Newell Road Bridge in Woodland Avenue Intersection. We would have another traffic signal in front of the driveway in front of four seventy five Newell to allow that resident to exit. So the cost associated with the traffic signals, it's approximately about a million. So any savings that we would do based on concrete by building a bridge that is narrower, we would actually be offset based on the traffic signals. In addition to that, the traffic signals would require future operation and maintenance, something that the proposed alternative does not trigger. So one of the benefits of why this alternative was selected was Alternative Two does not has a one time expense during construction. Future maintenance, but it's, it would be minor in comparison to maintaining and operating the traffic signals that would be necessary for Alternative One.
I was kind of interested that you said that there would be one traffic light for the one house that has the driveway that comes out onto the Newell Road. So that house, that driveway would have a traffic light.
That's correct. So in order for that resident to exit or enter their property, traffic on the bridge would have to stop. In order for traffic on the bridge to stop, the other intersection would also need to be connected.
Okay, and I'm still a little bit confused about the funding, because in the staff report, it says that it was going to be ten million. So based on this chart, it's actually nine point one million. And then there is, and then there was, there was, that there was a shortage where you are going back to Caltrans to ask for money?
Yes. So the the ten, I think in the staff report, there's a number that says ten, ten and a half. That is for the overall project cost. So that includes what money that Caltrans and Santa Clara Valley Water District have agreed to fund up to date. So that ten, ten and a half is that estimate. But the construction budget in front of you, that nine point one, that that's just a project construction.
Okay. And then are you also including, you know, I see there's staff oversight, so that's Palo Alto. Is the salaries included into all of this?
Palo Alto's contribution to date has been the oversight managing the project. It's not included under the two numbers in front of you, but I could say based on percentages, you know, how much time we actually spent on the project. And right now, there's an amount of time we've been spending through the entire entitlements, but as we move forward into construction, we'll be spending more time on the project.
Okay, so that would be something that would be nice to have, so that we have a complete picture, including the staff oversight, which means, you know, the hours that they work. So we, it'll be, it'll be nice for you to add that into it next, you know, next time around. And then the city of East Palo Alto doesn't have any oversight or any staff hours included in this? This is completely a Palo Alto project?
That's correct.
Quick question, so what is the flow capacity that the bridge is designed designed to handle now? So it used to be at sixty six hundred, so what is it going to do with the new bridge?
Capacity, the proposed capacity is being raised to seventy five hundred. That is consistent with the capacity of Middlefield and the flood of record. Under pressurized conditions, meaning the water level could rise and push up against the bridge deck. It could actually pass the one hundred year storm event. It could pass the eighty one fifty.
Oh, okay. So with with replacing this bridge, it's, the project is not going to, is it going to improve our FEMA ratings or reduce the flood insurance for neighboring households?
Not on its own.
Not on it, so we need the other two upstream to to be able to get that reduction and rating, improve the rating?
That's correct.
Okay.
What it's doing on its own is just reducing the risk.
Is just what?
On its own, this bridge is just reducing the risk, but it's not improving any FEMA ratings.
Okay, okay. And we would have to complete the other two in order to get that rating?
Yes.
Okay, and then on your, so I noticed that there is going to be eight trees that are going to be cut down?
That's correct. We have, we have the eucalyptus trees that are due close proximity to the bridge. And we also have several trees that are around the creek banks. The buckeye tree, I believe, one of the residents spoke about it earlier. Having to raise the road in order to meet the capacity, anticipated capacity, and also the approaches plays a really close proximity to the tree roots. So SEQA analyzed is the removal of these trees, that it's really difficult or impossible to try to protect, knowing that we're going to raise the road approximately at the approaches about four feet.
And obviously, you're going to be replacing those trees, right?
Yes.
Okay. You know, when you just said that you were going to be raising the bridge and also raising the road, what is the drainage going to be like? Because we certainly don't want surface water from rains and so forth to be going onto properties or to be pulling in the middle of the street, right?
Right.
So you've, that's all already been assured that there is going to be drainage to take care of the overflow?
Right, so any drainage from the roadway will be managed within the public right of way. Raising the road actually makes the road drain farther towards Edgewood Drive, so the rain runoff will drain in that direction. Anything that could potentially get into private property, we will look at during the design phase of making improvements that would address any drainage that may land on the private neighborhoods.
Okay, okay. I think that's my questions for now. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Koo, Brad Eagleson, Public Works Director. If I could just supplement one of Michelle's answers. You had asked about the funding for Alternatives One and Two, and I think something that wasn't touched on is that under Alternative One, that Caltrans Highway Bridge Program grant funding, the eight million dollars, that alternative would not be eligible for that funding.
Oh, interesting.
So under Alternative One, we'd have to find alternative funding to the Caltrans.
And that's because it doesn't follow Caltrans Bridge Standard or roadway standard?
That's correct.
And the standard is that each of the lanes has to be ten feet? Is that, is that what it is?
Do we have that? Is that correct, Michelle?
There's a minimum width, and as long as we provide the shoulders for a narrow bridge, then yes, that would meet the standards. So we would need those of the four feet wide. We can't just reduce it down to ten.
Okay, so that even, just, I'm sorry, just want to clarify, so even the ten for the ten feet for the one lane, you wouldn't be able to put the bicycle on that shared road to share it with the lane?
Sorry, so yes, we would be able to do that, but we also need, with the ten feet, regardless of the bikes, we need a shoulder. So the shoulders are required.
And the shoulder right now is the four feet that you're going to be using for the bicycles?
That's it.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you, Brad.
Thank you all. Okay, let's go to our members of the public who wish to speak on this item, and if the city clerk would please help me with that.
Yes, we will open the public hearing now. Our first speaker is Paul Gomina. Paul, you will have two minutes to speak. Paul, you may have to unmute at your end.
There we go.
Go ahead, you have two minutes.
Thanks. I represent Yang Sheng. He's the owner of the single family home located at fourteen ninety nine Edgewood Drive in Palo Alto. It is the property closest to the Newell Bridge. San Francisco Creek Run. San Francisco Creek runs through the back of his property. There is a drainage or flood control easement as well. The, I've been involved in the project for about a year when I first met with the uh owner of the property and uh members of the Palo Alto staff. By the way, Mr. Shen is present in the au- audience and has asked me to speak on his behalf. We oppose the certification of the FEIR because it fails to adequately address all of the negative severe impact that this project will have, not just on our property, but also on the community in general. These are summarized in correspondence that I've had with the city. I would urge the council members before they vote on this to read my letter to the city dated June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. My extensive email to the ARB on ju- uh May sixth, twenty twenty. Um and my letter to the city council dated today. In the past, we have raised objections with respect to the fact that a construction, the construction staging area will be on our client's property. Make no mistake about that. I heard someone say that uh it's gonna be on the road. No, it's gonna be in my client's backyard, literally thirty feet from their house where the Shen's daughter will sleep. She has asthma. And the response to our comments in the EIR from the city has simply been, well, we're just gonna follow uh uh standard operating procedures. We're gonna comply with the environmental rules that already exist. That's insufficient. Uh I will state for the record that the statement of overriding considerations that I read is inconsistent in inadequate and fails to uh comply with SEQA. The mitigation plan is also inadequate and fails to comply with SEQA. Uh one of the things that
Mr. Gomina, you're too many to interrupt?
May I have an additional minute, given the situation?
Come up, that would be great.
Yes, I will. Um page two of my letter today regards the objections regarding the defective flood control analysis. But I wanted to conclude with my comments on page four, which this ER does not take into consideration the COVID-nineteen emergency. What happens if workers can't come to work? What happens if the contractors go out of business? What happens if the equipment vendors and material vendors cannot supply because they've gone out of business? What happens if the local treasuries and Caltrans uh are facing financial uh uh problems? Our client is stuck with a construction, half-constructed bridge or construction equipment lying in its backyard. And by the way, make no mistake, the the water flow is not just water, it's debris. I lived through Okay, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Ivy Wong. Ivy, go ahead, you have two minutes. You may have to unmute at your end.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, I just want to ask that is Plato going to have the curfew?
This is on a, this is not speaking on the curfew, this is speaking on an agenda item.
Oh, then for that I don't have any comments.
Did you wanna speak on the Newell Road Bridge?
Uh no, no.
And that's what this is.
I see, but later on, are you going to talk about the curfew?
That was already taken care of earlier tonight.
Uh but I still don't see you give the opportunity for her to say anything, right?
Not, yeah, no, not tonight.
Um ma'am, you're you're absolutely welcome to send the city council an email or join next week's meeting uh to share your thoughts.
I see, okay, no problem. Thank you, but I don't have the comments about there.
Our next speaker is Zania Hammer. Zania, go ahead.
So. All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Um so I live on Sharon Court, close to intersection of Channing and Newell. We have been working on flood control for San Francisco Creek for over twenty years. We have lived through the ninety-eight flood. And the San Francisco Creek GPA in, together with the member agencies, have put together a very thoughtful, workable flood control plan. We had agreed to work on flood control from downstream to upstream. The project downstream of one oh one has been completed. It is now time to work on the section upstream of one oh one. Newell Road Bridge uh needs to be replaced before Pope Chaucer Bridge can be replaced. Um and that is a huge source of flooding risk for our neighborhood. So this project is absolutely vital and necessary for flood control. And I urge you to approve it as uh and proceed with it as quickly as possible. The proposed project alternative is well thought out. Thank you to the staff. Uh it represents a great compromise. It is as small as it is acceptable to East Palo Alto. Um and the larger alternatives such as alternative three and four have been ruled out based on the community input. It's a great project. Uh Mayor, uh uh City Manager Chiketa talked about inclusion and unity. This is a bridge between two cities, and both cities have to agree to it, and this is the design that East Palo Alto um can agree to. So let's uh please approve this project and proceed with it as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hammer. Our next speaker is Pamela Wagner.
Good evening, Mayor Fine and council members. We are very concerned about the traffic down Newell Road and across the Newell Bridge. We live in a neighborhood, and we know what happens every day during morning and afternoon rush hour, which everyone can now agree starts at three P M. Our neighborhood has six schools within a mile of the bridge that serve our children, Duvernac, Walter Hayes, Green, Castelaya, Palo Alto High School, and Saint Albert the Great Elementary. Hundreds walk and ride to school via the bridge and adjoining streets daily, laughing and talking, and in their joyful and youthful way, completely oblivious to the speeding cars trying to get to and from the other side of town. We also have Waze and Google Map commuters speeding through all our neighborhood streets every weekday in attempt to quickly get to and from the freeway. Several years ago, the city and parents at all our schools embarked on a special program to design the safest route to our schools for our children. After many meetings, Newell Road was selected as a major road for getting our kids to all our schools safely. With alternative two, the Newell Bridge will no longer be an undesirable commuter route. How will the city continue to keep the Newell Road route safe for our children? Alternative one will continue to maintain a reasonable amount of cars with drivers who don't mind going the slow way because they aren't in a hurry. In spite of the traffic analysis, the majority of our neighbors agree, alternative two will open the bridge up to more and faster traffic. For our children's sake, please choose alternative one. It will solve both flooding needs and traffic needs, and please ask the city to find an alternative way to fund the bridge construction rather than choosing alternative two because they think they might get the money from Caltrans. Please choose a solution that meets everyone's needs. Please select an alternative that solves both traffic and flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Our next speaker is Ben Ball. Ben, go ahead.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh my name is Ben Ball. I live on Edgewood Drive in Palo Alto and lived on Edgewood Drive since nineteen ninety-six. Public Works projects should never unnecessarily pit neighbors against each other, and sadly, Palo Alto's staff recommendation for build alternative two does just that. Since two thousand two, I've communicated to staff along with many of my neighbors who live in close uh close to the Newell Bridge that protecting our children who use Newell Road to get to school, decreasing speeding on Newell Road and mitigating traffic increases were equally important to mitigating flooding. Build alternative one satisfies the needs of my neighbors as and it has always satisfied the needs of those who are concerned about flooding. Staff recommends build alternative two. I'd like to offer a different interpretation of the draft ER data and recommend you support build alternative one. The first bullet point in the objectives is the draft EIR states reducing average car speed and traffic is an objective. Your report states that alternative two best meets these goals, yet the data in the report suggests something different. According to the G J K M traffic report published in twenty nineteen as part of the draft EIR process, build alternative two will increase traffic by quote two to five percent from twenty twenty to twenty forty relative to do doing nothing. Staff may not believe this is an increase, but residents consider this significant. Additionally, most residents believe this materially understates the increase, given the seventy-nine percent increase of peak uh P M traffic over the bridge during the prior four years, reported in the same T J K M twenty nineteen report, and the fact that the T J K M analysis didn't account for impacts from Uber Lyft, any of the mobile navigation apps, EPA's thirty-year development plan, or Stanford's development plan. Build alternative one is superior to build alternative two on this criterion. The current bridge starts approximately twen- two hundred feet from Edgewood Drive. The configuration of the bridge forces cars to crawl across the bridge in order to avoid hitting cars entering the bridge from the opposite side. Additionally, the current visibility while entering the bridge from Woodland Avenue site forces cars to stop prior to entering the bridge. Build alternative two eliminates the need for cars to stop prior to entering the bridge and provides sixty additional feet of roadway for cars to build speed before getting at a drive. Under build alternative two, cars will enter the bridge already at speed and will have thirty percent more unencumbered roadway to build speed. While staff has presented this data as inconsequential, I believe this data demonstrates that build alternative two fails the objective to quote avoid increasing speeds on Newell Road and will increase the average speed across the bridge.
Mr. Ball, please sum up.
Present any of these issues, it was superior to build alternative two on this criterion. The report states that build alternative two has a similar environmental impact on all other build alternatives. However, the draft EIR states that build alternative two will permanently remove twenty percent more trees than build alternative one. Once again, build alternative one is superior to build alternative two on this objective. Caltrans isn't the only source of funding, nor should Caltrans dictate what's appropriate.
Your your time is up and
Your time is up.
We have uh just ever for everyone's um knowledge, we keep these time moments so we can be respectful of everyone who wants to speak. We have uh fourteen or so folks who still wanna speak on this item, so we we'd like to make sure to get to everyone efficiently and not uh have this go too late where people have to drop off. But thank you for for your uh comments, Mr. Ball.
Our next speaker is Hamilton Hitchens. Hamilton, go ahead.
Hello.
Go ahead, you have two minutes.
Twenty-two years ago, I stood thigh-deep in floodwaters on the street in front of our newly purchased home across from the Duvernac Elementary School, watching the floodwaters rise up to our door sill. Four hundred of my neighbors were not so lucky and had devastating damage to their homes. In addition to the forty million dollars in damage the flood did, the city paid three million dollars in claims. This is because the city is liable for the poorly designed bridges that restrict the flow of water under the bridges with unnecessary concrete abutments. The liability damage for the next flood will likely be much larger. The Architecture Review Board voted unanimously to approve this project selecting alternative two. And the P T C voted six to one in favor of alternative two with the one dissenting vote primarily based on the desire for an even better bicycle access, which the city staff has since spent considerable time investigating. A couple of reasons why the staff recommended alternative two and many residents support it include it's the smallest bridge that meets the Caltrans requirements for whom the city expects to receive eighty-eight percent of the fu- five percent of the funding. In addition, alternative two is the smallest alternative that East Palo Alto will agree to. And because this bridge is under shared jurisdiction with them, that means alternative one is not an acceptable nor feasible alternative. You know, you can always build a speed bump on the Palo Alto side to slow down traffic further. Please approve alternative number two, the smallest alternative that's fully funded by outside sources and acceptable to East Palo Alto. This project provides much-needed flood protection and bicycle infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchens. Our next speaker is Meg Wait Clayton. Meg, you have two minutes.
Uh hi, I just wanna say uh that Mr. Schnaka is right. The motivation for the narrow bridge has always been uh the traffic uh problem. There's exactly one street middle schoolers can bike on to Green Middle School, and that is Newell. Anyone on that road any morning during the school year will see kids riding side by side, talking, not paying much attention. You and I can say they should be more careful, but they're middle schoolers and frankly, not less attentive than drivers using cell phones. I can't imagine why we are considering a proposal that puts more faster traffic on that road, putting children at risk on the only path they have to school. I'd ask you to please support build alternative number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton. Our next speaker is Jamie Rappaport. Jamie, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. Uh I live on Edgewood uh in the block off Newell, and I'm calling to express my support for build alternative one rather than alternative two. Um the alternative one addresses the flood issue as does two. So to me, that is uh, there's no difference there. I think the big difference as some of the callers have or some of the um comments have have uh spoken to uh is that there is a huge difference in the amount of traffic that there's gonna be on Newell with alternative one. Uh or alternative one versus alternative two. Um and I think it'll be much lower with alternative one, and I think this is the most important aspect. Again, I think flooding is gonna be addressed either way, but traffic is the fundamental difference between the plans. And um as uh Ben Ball spoke to earlier, uh the traffic reports don't uh the the analysis you did in twenty nineteen or that you had done uh does not appear to really address um what the likely impact, especially with Waze and and um Google Maps and and other navigation apps, what what that impact is gonna be. Uh and I would just echo the comments that when you see kids riding down the street, literally hundreds of kids, um and they're generally, they don't have their hands on the handlebars, and they're side by side, and they're talking to one another. I think it would be extremely dangerous to have people using this as a uh way to to cut through to the highway. Um on funding, I thought the answer given earlier was uh slightly confusing. The question was on funding sources, and the answer was about cost. The cost of alternative one and alternative two, uh they are within rounding error of each other. They're both about ten million dollars. The traffic lights only cost ten or fifteen thousand dollars a year. That is absolutely insignificant in the face of the ten million dollars of of fixed cost.
Mr. Rappaport, please sum up.
Sure, so I strongly recommend and and ask that you consider alternative one and that you look at uh alternative funding sources beside Caltrans. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rappaport. Our next speaker is Rebecca Young.
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. So my name is Rebecca Young, and my husband David and I and our five children moved to Dana Avenue in two thousand twelve. Sticker shock was an understatement. We chose this neighborhood because of its top-rated schools, accessibility to those schools, either walking or biking in a quiet neighborhood. We love our neighbors and appreciate the diverse fabric of our unique community. Our family is active here. I'm on the P T A. I have three Eagle Scouts. I have children that attend Duvernac, Green, and Palo Alto High School. I am not in favor of adding another two-lane large artery for the sake of traffic mitigation at the expense of the safety of our children. Our neighborhood roads were not planned that way. The kids that go to the schools right around the Newell Bridge serve kindergarten through eighth grade. These are young kids. They are not drivers. They do not understand the rules of the road. Let's be clear, both bridge options take care of future flooding issues. The larger brid- bridge will entice commuters coming and going from our town to use this as another main thoroughfare with the highest volumes during rush hour when our children are on the roads. Let's get this right for the sake of the children, the permanent residents on both sides of the bridge, all while protecting our homes from floods. The proposed option one satisfies all those needs. We don't need Waze and Google Map commuters zipping through our single-lane residential streets full of young children walking and biking to and from school just so commuters can shave off a few minutes on their day. I strongly hope the town council will listen to our pleas and have the courage to make the right choice to protect our children, maintain the integrity of the traffic flow, and maintain the integrity of the traffic flow and approve a project that provides safe back and forth for the residents of Palo Alto and East Palo Alto. A one-laned bridge is all we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Our next speaker is Steve Young. Steve, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I think it's been said well since the very beginning when we met this uh question with the city, um, there was a lot of concern around traffic and around increasing traffic along Newell. I think that there's a consensus that we don't want more traffic unnecessarily and to make it more dangerous. I think that we've solved the flooding issue on both. I think there's been misleading statements about the cost. One third less material in size for alt one would lead to three million dollars less cost. And fundamentally would serve the community, the the on both sides the best. We want to make keep maintain the safety of Newell Road. We want to make sure that bikes and people can get across, which is is a big issue with the the bridge. We want to um, make sure that traffic is not a thoroughfare. I think that's been a consensus, general consensus by neighbors. And so alt one really is the the art uh, answer. Uh, I feel like alt two is the science answer. It's based on funding and how big we make it and and what can we get accomplished and, you know, I just think there's there's just not that neighborhood consensus that alt one is. And so in in terms of that, it feels like that's been building for a long time despite the fact that the city continues to just push the science project that doesn't really serve flooding and uh, the needs of the kids on this on the streets and and increased traffic and speeds. And so really, as a neighbor, just on the corner of Southwood and Edgewood, clearly alt one will allow, will give us the best alternative for all, you know, impacted. And uh, I don't think we should be serving uh, outside commuters as our number one goal. And so for me, alt one has always been, and I'm really grateful for those that worked on it, to be the answer that really serves in an artful way all the needs of the neighbors, most importantly, and the kids, uh, obviously primarily. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Our next speaker is Ruby. Ruby, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Well, my name is Ruby and I'm residency in the Palo Alto for ten years already. And I know that your meeting is about the the bridge on the Newell, but my concern is the safety of the community at this moment. Please consider Caffew. And then I think that you already said that you discussed that in a earlier meeting. I didn't hear your decision yet. So would you please tell me what's your decision for the Caffew when you discuss that? Because I'm really concerned about the safety and the, you know, the business in the Palo Alto. If you haven't decided yet, I strongly recommend you to reconsider uh, the, you know, place the order of Caffew for Palo Alto. And the neighbor city, neighborhood cities, they are doing that, right? So they are doing that to their residents.
This is this, this is Adrian Fine, the mayor. Um, we're we're right now on an action item talking about the new Newell Road Bridge Replacement Project and the time.
I understand that because you have your agenda set up. But I think this is more important, the community, the safety is more important. Please do that for your committee.
Our next speaker is Karen Hickey. Karen, you have two minutes. Karen, you may need to unmute from your end. There you go.
Here I am. Um, this is for alternative one, and this is for your kids. I live on Newell, but let's say I'm more downstream Newell. I'm on the other side of Embarcadero. I see your kids every day on bikes, and it's not just middle school. It's elementary school, it's high school, and it's adults commuting to work or to the train station. Eighteen years ago, we moved here and worried about the traffic on Newell. I sat out between six and eight o'clock in the morning, and the only traffic I saw were the kids, and it was wonderful. So I am on Newell past Embarcadero. And we get the folks coming screaming down Newell. We get the ones that want to come off Embarcadero to cut through to miss the Middlefield intersection. So we get everything converging onto our streets, and I'll give you a couple of examples. My daughter was trying to get to school the other day, earlier this spring before the pandemic. She was nearly side swi- swiped because people were being careful of the kids in the bike lanes, but some were impatient and decided to pass on the left, thereby almost clipping her on the opposite side of the road. I saw that twice in the same month, seeing another motorist trying to get down to the light and heading down the left hand side of the road, opposite against the traffic of the kids. This is what we see every day. Oftentimes, we can't get out of the driveway because there are so many drivers going down our street. Often, thank you to my neighbors that do stop and let us out. We love the bikes, but we do not love the parade of the speedy vehicles going down. This is not a normal commute. I see people all the way from from Oregon Expressway in the left-hand turn lane, going down Middlefield, turning right on Seal, going left on Newell to get over down Newell to get to the freeway. This is not right, and we should do alternative one to reduce the traffic and let the kids and the adults and the residents have the street for their bikes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hickey. Our next speaker is Edgewood. Edgewood, you have two minutes.
Hi, uh, my name is Deepa Chatterjee and I live on Edgewood Drive between Newell and Island. Um, I am calling today in support of build alternative one. Um, a couple of reasons for this. The first is, like many callers have mentioned, I have little kids. They attend Duvernick and they um, they are walking and learning to ride their bikes to school, which is applaudable, um, but that means that they have to cross Newell. So they are reliant on drivers who are going slowly, who are watchful for stop signs and who are watchful for um, small children. So um, I do, I am concerned about an increased amount of traffic on Newell. I'd also like to add a perspective about Edgewood, which is the first street that would then come off the bridge. Edgewood um, is a very curvy road. You can't see straight down Edgewood from one side to the other. So for traffic going fast, which it does today, if that is increased, it'll be very dangerous for residents of the street, including kids, because you just can't see that far and traffic goes fast today. If the bridge makes more traffic attractive to going over the bridge, then we will have more traffic on these roads and it'll just be more dangerous. Finally, with regards to to funding, um, bu- build alternative one. Um, if East Palo Alto and Caltrains are not in support, and Caltrains are not in support of it, particularly for East Palo Alto, I would look for additional ways to fund those rather than just relying on alternative two as a default. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Yen. David, you have two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name is David Yen. I'm a lifetime resident of Palo Alto. I've lived here for over fifty-five years. In fact, I grew up on Newell Road, just four blocks from the Newell Road Bridge. I attended Crescent Park Elementary School, Jordan Junior High School, Palo Alto High School, and Stanford University. And in two thousand and seven, my wife and I and our two children have lived even closer to the Newell Bridge on Hamilton Avenue. First of all, I want to make an important correction to the staff report. The current bridge is not a two-lane bridge. While there may be a stripe across the middle of the bridge, you cannot drive two cars across the bridge in opposite directions at the same time. And I challenge staff, council members, Ms. Jeremiah, Ms. Raybo, both to actually try that. You cannot drive two cars across the bridge at the same time. So the premise that they are replacing an obsolete two-lane bridge with a new two-lane bridge is flawed. With that being said, I'm urging you to support the more limited build alternative one, which has a traffic flow pattern more in line with the current bridge. Firstly, it's been fully scrutinized by the E I R process and the difference in cost is negligible. More importantly, it satisfies the flooding concerns. And I was here in nineteen ninety-eight when and I saw firsthand the damage from the flood. Um, most importantly, it will preserve our quiet neighborhoods by limiting through traffic, protect our children who ride bicycles along or across Newell Road on their way to school and help to ensure the safety of families who use Newell Road and the neighboring roads to reach various parks and schools, including Rinconada, Eleanor Party, Walter Hayes, and Duvernick. And one more thing, uh, from tonight, on the issue of the traffic light for the one resident whose driveway is near the bridge. Please help me understand, why do they need a traffic light for a one-lane bridge with limited traffic, but not for a two-lane bridge with nonstop flowing traffic? That sounds like they're skewing data to support their arguments. So once again, I urge you to support the more limited build alternative one because it'll it'll help cut down the traffic and make our neighborhoods much safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yen. Our next speaker is Janie Farn. Janie. Go ahead. You have two minutes. She must have dropped off. Uh, Bob Fisk, you have two minutes. Bob, go ahead.
Hi, uh, City Council. Um, thank you for letting me speak again earlier. Uh, I'm calling, I don't support any of the the rebuilds of the bridge. I prefer to keep the bridge the way it is. The flooding in ninety-eight wasn't due to flooding at Newell Bridge. It was due to the Chaucer Street Bridge overflowing and that uh, the water flew flew uh, flowed south to the Duvernick neighborhood. Anyway, I don't support replacement of the bridge. I don't never have bought the argument from the the Joint Powers Authority that it was that we needed to replace all downstream uh, uh, from the Chaucer Bridge first. Um, I always thought um, uh, the Stanford offered to um, flood their double golf course, so a far upstream solution would have been uh, uh, better. So I would prefer to to leave the nineteen eleven bridge the way it is. Um, and if uh, i- if we have to go with a rebuild, then I would support uh, one of the other proposals uh, that would uh, preserve the hundred-year-old um, uh, California Buckeye, which is uh, at the entrance to the bridge from the Palo Alto side. So um, anyway, I don't support removing the bridge. I'd like to keep it the way it is. Uh, it's served the community and it's never overflowed its banks. So uh, thank you very much, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Our next speaker is Norm Beamer. Norm, you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
So um, the overwhelming majority of people in Crescent Park and in the surrounding neighborhoods have been urging uh, that the San Francisco Guido Creek flooding problem be fixed ever since the nineteen ninety-eight flood. And they want that to be done yesterday. So any sort of delay, uh, any further delay is just totally unacceptable. Please approve these environmental documents and let's go full speed ahead to fix the flooding problem. It has to be Newell Bridge first and then Pope Chaucer next, and then the other uh, adjustments that are needed in order to solve the nineteen ninety-eight level of flooding. Uh, the the current bridge is a two-lane bridge and uh, replacing it with a somewhat wider two-lane bridge does not have any likely effect on traffic. I don't know where these people who are worried about traffic are coming from. It just doesn't make any sense that there would suddenly be some great new influx of traffic. And the idea of a one-lane bridge with traffic lights at either end is so absurd and so uh, you know, it just, it's, I just can't believe that that would be a viable option. That the traffic backup down Newell would make people living on Newell just as miserable as the people who are now living on university when you have these long backups that are blocking your driveway. So uh, please proceed with uh, uh, wi- with the environmental documents and the preferred uh, solution, which is option two. Uh, a two-lane bridge without the, wi- with the, whi- which still has the uh, current configuration, which does help uh, slow down traffic. But the idea that traffic would be significantly increased, I think, is is so speculative and unlikely that that these concerns are are just unoriented. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Beamer. Our next speaker is Irving Rappaport. Mr. Rappaport, go ahead. You may have to unmute from your side.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so uh, Janie Farn could not stay on the line apparently because it's gone so long. But she has submitted a joint petition that was assigned by over a hundred people in the area that support alternative one. And uh, and and I think that those people are prepared to do whatever is necessary, including uh, bringing legal action if it becomes necessary to have an alternative that only deals with the flooding and not with the concerns about traffic. And you've heard plenty of comments about the concern about speeding traffic. I live on Edgewood, have been at this property for thirty-one years. And I see, and I'm on the corner of Newell and Edgewood. And I see people, as do the police officers in Palo Alto, see people running those stop signs at Newell and as they pass Edgewood. And so uh, to me, alternative one makes the most sense. And I think uh, that unless you satisfy both interest groups, the flooding and the traffic people, uh, this is not going to get resolved anytime soon. And by the way, there are a number of other uh, areas for seeking funding, including the S F C Joint uh, Powers Authority. Uh, Measure B passed in two thousand sixteen by Santa Clara County. Uh, Proposition sixty-nine, a twelve-cent gas tax and the car registration fees in two thousand eighteen. And once a final decision is made, uh, the I R is approved and the file design cleared, then the staff will apply for funding. As such, no construction grant for any alternative funding has been received. This was stated for the first time in a hundred-page memo that just went out to the City Council. A change of the recommendation of the council to approve building alternative one will not delay the project. Thank you very.
Hello? Ben, do you hear anything?
Hi, um, seems we may have lost the clerk for a moment.
Angie, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
There we go.
Uh, thank you. I, um, my name's Angie Ball and I'm here to speak about Bridge Alternative One. Um, you know, as has been said many times, alternative one and alternative two take care of the flooding issue. And so I, while I understand people who are extremely concerned about flooded and who have been flooded in the past, I can't understand why they prefer alternative two over alternative one, which also solves the flooding problem. And to hear someone say that that um, I just don't know how someone can intelligently say this, this is not going to have an impact on trap traffic. And so um, I just wish that the people that are so concerned about the flooding would also be concerned about the traffic. Um, my property is not in the flood zone, has no chance of flooding. But I I would like it to take place, um, alternative one, because it will ease the flooding fear. And I want to talk a little bit about funding. Um, Caltrans isn't the only source of funding, nor should Caltrans dictate what's appropriate for our neighborhood. Santa Clara County Measure B passed in two thousand sixteen allows one point five billion to local roadways and improving bike and pedestrian passageways. Additional, California Proposition sixty-nine, increased gas taxes and car registration fees to improve local roadways. Funds can be secured to construct a bridge that is appropriate for our neighborhood. It just requires a bit of effort. Alternative one is thirty-three percent smaller than alternative two. So it is reasonable to assume that alternative one material construction expense should be three million less than alternative two. Bridge alternative one mitigates flooding. Bridge alternative one mitigates flooding issues, maintains children's safety, and controls traffic levels and speeds to those currently experienced by the existing bridge. It's best for the entire community. It's not just best for those who are concerned about flooding, and it's not just the best alternative for those that are concerned about traffic. It's the best alternative for both, and it's the best alternative for bringing us together as a community and maintaining our wonderful city of Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball. Our next speaker is Carol M. Carol, you have two minutes.
Hi, this is Carol. I, I have been the long-term resident of the Duvernac and the question part addition areas. I raised two kids in, we used to live in Hamilton, near Newell, and now we're on roads. What I've seen in the recent years, there's a lot more traffic going through the shortcut in New's Bridge, especially during busy time, when the traffic's really bad. And I've seen multiple times, I think multiple times, how a lot of unsafe, I think, situations, seeing how our kids biking to school on the way almost, you know, get hit by cars. So I'm actually in favor of not doing anything to the bridge. If we have to do something, I support option one. Now, with the one minute left, I would like to talk about and ask this council to take into the emergency situation we have right now, facing this country or county. This is a really sad time and a very emotionally, emotional time. You know, we definitely stand with the peaceful protester and hoping for a better change of the system that is not. It's really hard to even think about. I can't imagine what it's like to be, you know, those families who's been impacted with the inequality in our system. At the same time, I think we are also, as minority residents here, we also worry about our safety with what is going on, and we would like to ask for curfew to start as soon as possible to make sure that, you know, the, the violence doesn't happen in our city. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Our next speaker is Steve Bisit. Steve, go ahead. You have two minutes. There you go.
Well, thanks.
Two minutes.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
I live in Fife Avenue. We were flooded, not badly, but we had a room full of mud in 1998. A lot of people were being working to get this problem solved ever since. As far as I know, everyone, or almost everyone in the neighborhood is concerned about traffic. The traffic has gone way up. But I think it's a really severe misstatement to say that there's a consensus behind this one lane bridge solution. In fact, I, I think that the majority are primarily concerned with flood control and want to get it done and get on with it. So let me say something that for all people really genuinely and properly concerned about traffic on Newell and the other streets such as Edward, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about the effect of replacing the existing two lane bridge with a safer two lane bridge. And invite anyone concerned to come and actually watch the traffic at the bridge, because once you watch it, you'll see that the new bridge really, as in the, the traffic report, will make almost no difference. You have to go around the dog leg that, the zigzag that exists on Woodland Avenue. You have to go, you'll have to stop at all the same places, at the same, same stop signs. The existing bridge is actually used as a two lane bridge. It doesn't inhibit anybody from passing two cars at it. People do it all the time, even though it's dangerous and will just be safer. And by the way, nobody will object to speed bumps to, to slow down what could be a minor increase in speed coming off the bridge. But Newell is a big straightaway for cars to race along right now, and that needs to be addressed separately. I think we should put some bumps there too. So make no mistake, if we stop to consider the one lane bridge, it'll delay this project massively. No alternative funding has been volunteered. If somebody would like to do that, that would be great, no problem. But otherwise, I recommend that we get on with this, support the excellent work that's been done by staff and all the other people involved and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bisit. Our next speaker is Emmy Lou North. Emmy Lou, go ahead.
Hi, this is actually Mike North. So we have lived on Pittman right off of Newell for about 15 years. I have, over the past 10 years, walked three children to Duvernac and have been consistently concerned with the traffic and in particular, the speed of traffic as these young kids, some of them unsupervised, are walking across the street, oftentimes not in crosswalks. I've also crossed the Newell Bridge in my car many times, and I have had to wait in my car many, many times for another car to pass. And as the previous caller said, maybe you can do it as a two laner, but it would be dangerous. I don't think that's really the right argument. I think what we need to do is we need to find a solution that is safe, safe for the neighborhoods, and fixes the flooding problem. And so there's been a lot of conversation about 1A from the city, but I have not heard anything about alternative fundings, what they've done to, to explore those options. And so I'm wondering, one, has the due diligence been done on 1A funding? And if two, and if so, why that wasn't presented in the material that they provided the council? And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David, and David, I don't want to mispronounce your last name. So go ahead.
This is David Nique. So I am a resident on Edgewood near Newell, and I've got two young kids, both of whom attend Duvernac Elementary. And in doing so, right, they, they need to cross over the Newell, Newell Street in order to get there. I will say that as, as we sit here today, I'm uncomfortable with the amount of traffic and the speed of the traffic that goes down Newell Road. And, you know, I, you know, any proposal, right, that has the potential to increase that flow of traffic is a net negative in my mind. And, you know, frankly, you know, I'm highly skeptical of any sort of studies that have been done that say, you know, replacing a one lane bridge with a two lane bridge will, will not result in an increase in traffic pattern. And frankly, I think the, the study had something like 4% as the increase over a, over a, a decade-long period, which, I mean, just given how low that number is, it, it sort of, it just loses all credibility, frankly, given the history of the increase that you've seen over the last four to five years. Final point is, you know, we've been given two options to, to evaluate, right, with the objective of solving one, one issue, which is, which is the flooding issue. So within that, right, we would like to figure out a way to do it that doesn't cause negative, that doesn't have a negative impact on sort of the state of a, of a residential area. And so with that, right, it seems fairly clear to me that option one, which addresses the flooding issue, but preserves the neighborhood, the neighborhood traffic patterns without causing sort of a significant increase or even potential increase, frankly, in, in speeds of traffic and risk to the various young children that, that live in the neighborhood. That seems to me to be the most logical path, and that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Nique. Our next speaker is Janie Farn. Janie, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, this is actually Mike Farn. So my wife, Janie, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My wife, Janie, accidentally disconnected the last time. So she, so I'm just going to read her prepared remarks. It says, Dear Council, my name is Janie Farn. I am a resident of Palo Alto for 40 years and have lived in Crescent Park for 13 years on Newell Road, two blocks away from the bridge. Since 2012, I have been following the development of the Newell Bridge and have gone to all the meetings. Today, I'm here to present 116 signatures from 96 families that I received over the weekend for a group petition to build alternative one for the replacement bridge project. I know this is true because, this is me speaking, because I watched her read all the emails for the past two days. She collected those signatures starting on Saturday over the course of about 24 to 48 hours. So anyways, what motivated me to reach out to the neighborhood is the lack of transparency from the city and the lack of communication to the neighborhood. There were a number of meetings from 2012 to 2015, but not very many since then. At the last June 2019 meeting, only a handful of neighbors showed up because only a handful of neighbors were invited, those within 600 feet of the bridge. At the May 2020 ARB meeting, city staff had already selected alternative two. So what happened to alternative one? So I decided to reach out to neighbors for their view. We all want a new bridge that takes care of the flooding issue, but we also want to maintain traffic calming and safety for our children and community. So many neighbors share the same feeling of desperately wanting to preserve the neighborhood as is now a peaceful, quiet street. We don't want to increase the traffic capacity. We also don't want East Palo Alto to be able to permit more high-density apartments because they have a higher capacity bridge. In closing, I want to say, I feel that the Palo Alto staff hasn't heard the voices and pleas of the residents who are deeply concerned about the children's safety and mitigating traffic. The list I've collected represents over 116 neighbors who favor alternative one. We've made this argument since 2012, yet we haven't heard any response. We haven't heard any efforts that Palo Alto staff has made to pursue alternative one, so we would like you, the city council, to hear our voices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Farn. Our next speaker is Kevin Fisher. Kevin, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yes, good evening. My name is Kevin Fisher. I live at 728 Alistair Avenue, have lived here since 1995. In 1998, my home was flooded. I escaped in the middle of the night with my two young children at that time, they're now both adults, wading through thigh-deep poison oak-infested waters. It was a really traumatizing experience with lots of property damage and disruption to our lives, and it's a miracle that there was no loss of life in this process. So we've now been through a 10-year thoughtful process to replace this bridge. We've been actually waiting for more than 20 years for, for a solution to this, this man-made problem, and we're at the, the one yard line. And now, now all these things are being brought up at the 11th hour, so about, about traffic. Traffic is a community-wide problem. So two lane bridge will, will not create traffic problems. There are many traffic calming opportunities as we, as we've seen all over Palo Alto. Palo, Palo Alto has a traffic problem in general. It's not about this bridge. So in my mind, this is a code word for delay, 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 delay. So push this off so nothing ever happens. So what I'm saying is approve this project. We need this bridge. We've been waiting for 20 years. We've had a thoughtful 10-year process in order to come up with an alternative. This is a fundable plan that's been approved by the, the neighboring stakeholders. And now at the 11th hour, it's the wrong time to be bringing up these specious issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. And our final speaker is Barry Medoff.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Barry Medoff. I live at 1431 Arc, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have two minutes.
I live at 1431 Arcadia Place, very close to Newell. I am as sensitive to traffic on Newell as anybody. I walk two kids to Duvernac practically every day for many years. I don't want to see more traffic. But this is not about traffic. This is about lives, my life. I was here in 1998 when it flooded. I gave shelter to a friend of mine whose gas pipe cracked under his concrete driveway, broke the gas line and filled his garage up with gas. The fact that nobody drowned, the fact that nobody blew up, the fact that nobody was electrocuted during the flood is a minor miracle. This is not about traffic. This is about lives. And this is not about 100 signatures on some petition. This is about 1,400 households whose lives will be at risk if we don't fix the flooding problem. That's what we're here to do, fix the flooding problem. We're concerned about traffic. There are other ways to mitigate the traffic, other ways to mitigate the traffic, solve the problem and deal with the traffic separately. The traffic problem is delay. It is a set of people, one in particular, who has managed to delay this project again and again, year after year, time after time, with one excuse after another. Now it's enough. Now it's in your court, every one of you on the city council. We hold you responsible to approve this now, after years, decades of study. We have an alternative. We need to do it. You need to do it. We expect you to do it, and I'm waiting for you to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Medoff. And that ends our public speakers for tonight.
Thank you so much, Clerk Minor, and thank you to all of our public speakers tonight. I know this project has been a very, very long time coming, and it was certainly sobering to hear some of the traumatic stories you all share. So thank you for that, and thank you for your continued interest in sticking with us until 10 o'clock tonight on this. So we now return to council. I think we had more than just clarifying questions in the last round, so I'm going to open it up to questions, comments, and motions. And if staff could please put up the recommended actions for tonight. If I recall correctly, it was certification or approval of the EIR, the Record of Land Use Action, and then directing the city manager to proceed with final design.
Hold on one second. Is that showing for you guys?
Yeah, it's showing. I'm just hoping for maybe the, one of the last slides.
There you go.
Recommended act, motion. Okay, thank you. So this is what we should probably be working off. The first hand I saw was Councilmember Cormac, who also happens to sit on the JPA representing our city.
Thank you, Mayor Fine. I, I did refrain from asking questions earlier because they weren't clarifying, so I hope with my colleague's permission, I'll be able to go through, through my list. Thank you so much. Let me begin with thanking our partners, because this is not an action that, that we take ourselves. We work with the other cities, with the JPA, with Valley Water, with many, many regional agencies. So this is not, not just about our city. I just want to start by saying that. And then I do have a couple quick questions. One is, was there an earlier version of this project when the EIR started back in 2015? And if so, what, what did that look like in comparison to some of these options we have today?
This is Brad. I'm going to take that since I had worked on that project. I haven't looked at the layout of that project for a while, but I believe it was significantly wider. It had an option to, to fully realign the bridge so that it lined up with Newell Road in East Palo Alto, and it included two overlooks over the creek. So those are the, the principal differences.
I, I also recalled that it was significantly larger, and part of what we've done now is take into consideration community input on the size of it. So speaking of East Palo Alto, when are our neighbors and colleagues going to be considering this?
Brad, again, they won't consider this through a formal approval as council is being asked to, but as Michelle mentioned, Michelle and Claire, we're working on this cooperation agreement with them that'll define the terms and the various ways the two cities will work together to move forward with the project and partner on constructing it.
Okay, construction. You're just leading me into my next questions here, Director Eggleston. So the extension of the contract suggests that it'll be right at the end of 2021. There was something else in the staff report, but then it was updated today. Are we looking at completion in mid 2023? Is that, is that what I, we just sort of put that all together?
I'll ask Michelle to give the, the latest on the thinking on completion.
That's correct. I think what we're looking for is not mid 2023, but closer to the end of 2022.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. So a lot of questions tonight about build alternative one, and I want to be sure I understand what from the staff report, what was here. It looks like based on the resolution that's prepared for us, that alternative one would permanently increase impact on traffic. Is is that what the report shows?
Built alternative one would not result in a significant impact under Palo Alto's thresholds. However, it would result in delays at multiple intersections. I believe it's the Newell and woodland intersection and the Newell and Edgewood intersection. And these delays are, you know, of more than four seconds, so they're moving from L O S A to L O S B or in some cases, L O S A to L O S C, I believe. So there would be impacts, but they are not considered significant under CEQA.
But they are permanent for 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 Build One. Okay. And will Caltrans provide funding for building alternative one?
I can answer that. No, Caltrans wouldn't.
Okay.
It would consider alternative one as functionally obsolete.
And there was a reference by one of the members of the public to East Palo Alto's preferences and needs. Would East Palo Alto approve or cooperate with a build alternative one?
In the past, based on our conversations with them, no. They also don't see the purpose of having the traffic signals.
Okay, great. Thanks. That's very helpful. And then I just want to touch on trees. I think I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. When I looked through the E I R itself, it said there are for, let's go with the locally preferred alternative, build alternative two. There are twenty-four affected. There are twelve removed, actually. The eight number that was earlier, that's the eight protected trees. Is that right?
Correct, yeah.
And I, you know, that buckeye is beautiful. And I wonder, and I I'll be very sorry to see it go, is there anything creative or thoughtful we can do with, someone talked about planting parts of the buckeye or anything. Have there been any thoughts put into how we might, you know, honor the heritage of that tree?
Yeah, I'll let you answer, Michelle.
Thank you. I was gonna say we have. I think at one point, we talked about potentially relocating part of this tree or some of the part of the tree to the Junior Museum, you know, to incorporate it into another project.
Okay, great. Excellent. All right, so now I want to just address a few comments. Thank you so much for the answers to those questions. So there are a lot of numbers that get thrown around, and I just want to make sure everyone understands, like, the flood of record, which is the seventy-year flood, which is the one we had in nineteen ninety-eight, and the reality that with climate change, more floods and and larger floods are definitely a risk. So I think most people understand that, but I I just want to say that's 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 pretty much why we have to do this. And then in terms of funding, we have just been through a bruising budget season. And we're not done yet, and then we're gonna live with the impacts of this next year and for the years to come. So I don't see any other sources of eight, eight million dollars absent Caltrans being able to provide this funding. So I personally am grateful to all the people who have worked so hard to make this something that we can have funded by by other agencies. I think one of the emails we received is that this is O P M, other people's money. It's not exactly true because Valley Water is 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 a part of our community, and we support them, and they support us. So I just want to make sure that that's that that's captured. We have a responsibility to keep the people who live here safe. And we also actually have a responsibility to do the right thing with and for our neighbors, because the water in that creek and in the bay does not respect the borders that we have drawn on a map. It really has been a pleasure to serve on the S F C J P A after council member-ness and so many of our prior colleagues. It has been a very long time coming. And, you know, I I consider it an exciting time for us to be able to move forward with this. So on there.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Councilmember Tanaka.
So my question is around the funding. So how much of the funding is actually secure? Because I know that the state is suffering like a sixty-eight billion-dollar budget deficit. And I'm wondering, like, how much of this money is actually believed there versus might not be there. Can staff talk a bit about that? Because I know that the state's looking to cut money anywhere they can.
That's right. So Caltrans approves funding at different phases. They've approved the design phase, they've into the entitlements. They have not yet approved the construction. But we have been working with Caltrans and with Valley Water for a number of years, as stated, and they are aware of our current estimates. They have not said no. They they have looked at the estimates, and obviously, they're also waiting to get approvals from on the E I R. They're not going to allocate funding to a project that is not approved. Once we get approved, then we can meet with Caltrans and continue to pursue the construction funding.
I see. Okay. And is the plan, if we don't have funding for it, we're not gonna do it right away? Or is is a plan that we're still gonna do it? Because we, you know, as my colleague mentioned, there's not a lot of money sitting around right now. So what happens if we don't get the additional construction money?
So I I can answer that question, but I wanted to kind of reference one piece that's missing out of that whole conversation about funding needs. If we don't build the bridge that is that is not compliant to ASHTO, the State and Highway Association that designed these bridges, if it's not built per bridge, nobody will fund this project. So it's not just Caltrans and pursuing other funding, but making sure that a bridge is in compliant guarantees us funding.
No, I I get that. Now, what I'm asking is more about. So because right now it sounds like the money is not in the bag, right? So my question is, so let's say we go forward with the design, and then we're trying to get the money for the construction, but low but whole, the state's sixty-eight million dollars in the hole, sixty-eight billion dollars in the hole, and they're not really handing out money right away. So what what's what happens then? What do we do?
I can answer that. If we were unable to get the the funding source that we're expecting, essentially, the the funding for this project would would, I think, go into the mix with the the broader upstream project that needs a funding agreement between all the J P A partners. There's already a funding shortfall for that project that's being investigated and a funding agreement that will be negotiated sometime probably in the next year. This project specifically is not part of that because of specifically the availability of the Highway Bridge Program funding for it.
Okay, so it sounds like the answer would be, yes, we try to seek out funding from other places. But, okay. Because I don't know whether we can get more money from our C I P.
That's member. I think it's worth noting that, as as Brad pointed out in this perhaps term of art here, the Highway Bridge Program is a specific funding program administered by Caltrans, excuse me, boy, we talk about Caltrain way too often. Administered by Caltrain using combination of special state and federal funds, typically gasoline tax funds. So it's Highway Trust funds. It is not general fund, not available for reallocation for other uses.
But does that mean it's guaranteed funding? Or is it is it?
It is guaranteed for highway purposes. So to your point on issues of whether it's state budget needs or city budget needs, it's non-general fund. So it is especially used purpose or special purpose funds that cannot be used for general government purposes.
But doesn't necessarily mean the funding is there, but it would has a high likelihood of being there.
Yes.
Okay. And then I thought Councilmember Cruz's questions were quite interesting in terms of why doesn't E P A share some of the costs of this bridge, right? It's between our two cities. Like, so why is it all on us on this for this bridge?
Well, Councilmember Tanaka, we're not, as the city of Palo Alto, we're not paying into the bridge either. Because in Caltrans inventory of bridges, the city of Palo Alto is listed as the owner of this bridge. We took on the project management as staff because that gave us the ability to apply for funding under the Highway Bridge Program, as Ed mentioned.
Because I know, like, for other projects, like our wastewater treatment plant, we split the cost among multiple cities. I realize we're gonna get some, like, funding from other agencies. But, you know, for the staff costs, right, you would think that would be shared among our cities.
Palo Alto has, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, this is part of a long history of working between the two cities, and certainly, we assist East Palo Alto whenever we can on projects of mutual interest.
Can you bring up the slide for option, striping option B? So both of these bridges are the same same width, but the strapping options are different. So option B has a bike lane, a raised bike lane, so that's all the kids going to green, Duvernac, all the other schools can get there safely. I actually take this, I got a home default lots. I take this bridge a lot myself right now. And and it is kind of a, when you get to the E P A side, it's a little bit, little bit scary. So I can understand the need for this. I almost got hit once myself here as well. So I I definitely understand the need. So for between option and option B, I, does option B still qualify as a funding, or does it, is there something, funding-wise, is there something that makes it not eligible for the funding?
It does qualify for the funding.
It does. Okay. It does qualify. Okay. Because I, you know, from my office hours and just from the comments tonight, I think the people that don't live near there but are affected by the flooding want this project done right away. But the people who live near this project are very concerned about the traffic and speeding, you know, safety of their kids. So it seems like option B would be the, you know, closer to making everyone happy would it would get the funding, but not be the highway that people fear, right? It's it's still not as narrow as it used to be, but it's more narrow than option A. It would protect the kids or bikers in general crossing this bridge. And a lot of bike, a lot of bridges where pedestrians or bikes are crossing, and same time, they're they tend to be separated by some sort of physical barrier. This would have a curb. So this seems to be safer and makes makes more sense. So so I guess, as as staff, you know, interacting with the community, it sounds like you guys did a lot of great outreach, which is which is great. But there seems to be a lot of, I mean, just on tonight's call, and just from my office hours, there are people who are very strong opinions and opposite of the corner here. And has has staff done, you know, a fairly extensive survey in terms of to understand where people are on this? And if so, I'd love to know what the results were.
We we have not done a survey, but you're right, Councilmember Tanaka, there there has been a long process of engagement. I think it was mentioned in some of the slides that Michelle went over. You know, all the way back to two thousand twelve, when there were some proposals on on the bridge that were met with pretty significant community opposition. At that time, we committed to do this full environmental impact report process. We had multiple community meetings around a alternative screening process. So at one point, there were, I think, seven or eight different alternatives we were looking at. Community meetings where we established screening criteria. We had an initial screening analysis that was done, and then meetings that showed the results of that. And then from there, we went on into the the typical environmental impact report process where there are the the technical studies and the release of the draft E I R.
Did you survey about option A, striping versus option B, striping? Did you get much community input on this?
I'll let Michelle answer that. I'm I'm certain that we didn't do a survey, but there may have been comments at community meetings or other boards and commissions.
Right. So I think option A, option B came about as far as the comments we heard through the boards and commissions. So a lot of comments had been made, so we put up option B as one of the items to discuss. I I think we talked to option B with more closely with East Palo Alto to see which they prefer. East Palo Alto's Public Works Engineer Director at Public Works indicated option A would be what they would propose or what they would prefer.
Yeah, the E, the E P A side, I noticed, is a little bit more multifamily, higher density than the Palo Alto side. And because I, from the, from the residents I talked with on the Palo Alto side, the concern really is around speeding, you know, traffic. And so and so the the bridge right now, remind me of the width of it right now. How wide is it?
The
Eighteen feet.
Okay, so this 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 is with option B, it's two feet wider for for the cars. It gets the funding. It fixes the flooding. It protects the bikers from getting run over. So it it seems like, and to me, it seems like it would be closer to what 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 the residents that we heard that called in tonight would 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 prefer. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the staff recommendation with option B. And, yeah, hopefully I get a second for this.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second for the staff recommendation. I assume you mean all the different parts of it, Councilmember?
Yeah, all this different, except option B.
Yeah, and then, but with option B as the as the striping option.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Sure. So it's hard to make everyone happy on this, and and it sounds like it's been going on for a long time. There's a need to fix the flooding problem. Looks like there's some money identified, although maybe it's not all the way there, and if it's not all the way there, we may have to revisit this again. You know, we heard a ton of community output or input on this, both, you know, before this meeting and during this meeting. There's a real concern about traffic and safety of the kids. Yeah, I mean, I, we all know that there was a green middle school kid who got killed just before the pandemic. Not here, but, you know, other places. I know that bike safety is a big deal in the in the community. I think this one seems like to be a much safer option than the other alternative. Because most bridges actually separate the bikes. So this seems like a much safer, same safer alternative, especially if you have elementary school kids crossing this bridge. I think parents would feel a lot safer that there's a curb protecting. And then in terms of the traffic, it's it is a wider bridge. It's only two feet wider, so it's not gonna be like a highway. So it's something which I think is a bit of a compromise, but it's probably closer compromise to what people would accept. I mean, there's still the tree issue, and and I think Councilmember Cormac actually has a good, you know, good question about that. So maybe we should, I'm I'm open to amendments to this. Maybe people should move the tree. I don't know if that's even feasible or or practical. But maybe there's other ways to kind of mitigate some of the other issues. But it's, the question is, how do we make as many people happy as possible? And this seems like to be the best, best possible solution.
Councilmember-ness.
I I think probably what probably what was the most persuasive was they, was the staff member who kind of referred to this as a covered bridge. And I'm sorry, I I don't remember your, the name of the person who was just speaking. The engineer, who is, who was the woman who just spoke to us?
Michelle.
Yes.
Bill Jeremiah.
Could you, could you just bring her back for a minute?
Yes.
Hi, I I think you called it antiquated. Am I right?
No, but I think the older bridge that we had previously was functionally obsolete. Maybe that's what you were thinking.
That's probably kinder to say. Yes, yes, rather than a covered bridge, right. However, I I think that, as Councilmember Cormac said, I spent some time on this before as well. And even though there's something about this that's, you know, somewhat romantic, that it goes back a hundred years, it is far safer to construct what is what is called either number two or or B. And even though I know the neighborhood is somewhat concerned about it, I think it will end up being far safer for kids. Kids will have enough room to ride their bikes, even if they sometimes ride together. I think they will be far more likely to safely cross the bridge. I think it's amazing that we've kind of come to having this discussion about actually doing it. I think it's amazing that we've kind of come to having this discussion about actually doing it. This has been in discussion for many, many years, even before the flood of ninety-eight. So, I'm delighted that we're going to move forward with it. I hope the funding comes through, and I realize this is a tough year for that. But I think that this really moves us in the right direction, and I, I hope the whole neighborhood will end up supporting this. So, thanks Greg for making the motion, and that's my, that's my comment.
Thank you, councilmember Niss. I'm just gonna jump in, because I've just got a few very short comments. So, do want to align myself with the earlier comments from Councilmember Cormac. This has been a long time coming, there's a safety and environmental need to do this. You know, many thanks to our partners. But, you know, alternative two i- is preferable for a number of reasons, as she highlighted. So, I am willing to support most of this motion. I am wanting to see where my colleagues are on letter D, which is the striping. I'll just note in the staff report, page seven says. The City of Palo Alto Office of Transportation and City of East Palo Alto's Public Works Department recommend approval of option A. Option A is a more common design and would integrate better with existing bicycle lanes along Newell Road in Palo Alto. Would also provide continuity to the sheriff's on Newell, Newell Road and East Palo Alto, and better connection to plan future bikeways along Woodland. So, it seems like that there's a preference here for option A. You know, in general, I am a fan of separated pedestrian and bike paths. But I think we also have to think about this in the context of.
Pretty now.
This bridge is, it's, it's a, it's a fairly small bridge, it doesn't have enormous traffic volumes. And I think there is merit to integrating with other bicycle, striping and, and patterns in the area already. As we all know, it's kind of, this, this whole bridge is kind of at a weird angle, especially as you get to the East Palo Alto side. There's some odd crossing.
Area.
Areas and, and directions. It's just after a dog leg in Palo Alto as well, so that's of concern to me. So, quick question to staff on that. Throughout the community meetings and a lot of the work, especially on alternative two, which striping option were you presenting?
So, I just want to clarify that we.
Sure, again, the, the depiction.
Sure, hold on one second. Can everybody see that? Okay, so, we do have Rafael Rios online from our transportation department. So, I'd like to have him kind of speak to this. But generally, if you look at the options, you can see that, especially as the bike lane ends in East Palo Alto. You end up on the sidewalk with, you know, then if you have to cross, take a left turn onto Woodland Avenue. You're not in the best location, you would be crossing over vehicles to do that. So, under the proposed option A and under the proposed option B, the vehicle lane itself would be ten feet. With a four-foot shoulder or four-foot raised lane. But as you, if you look into option A, as you approach Woodland Avenue. You would be looking to merge into the lane to be able to turn left if you were going to turn left onto Woodland Avenue. And that's part of why it's shared vehicle bike lanes, so that as appropriate, the bicycles would merge to share that lane. And so Rafael, maybe if you have anything to add to that, I think would be helpful.
Thank you, Claire, and good evening, mayor and council members, and Claire is absolutely correct. Option B would be, you know, a little bit awkward, but it's not too bad, because it's an always stop. But bicyclists would be coming off of a effective sidewalk and ramp, down a ramp. Whereas in option A, kind of much like any striped shoulder or bike lane, the bicyclist would, would share the lane and. And merge to the center of the travel lane to make a left turn out of it.
Okay, and when, when you were talking over alternative two with the community in general, were, were you presenting option A or B or both? Was it still kind of up in the air?
I can answer that, so when we were talking with the community, option A was the one that was on the table.
Okay, and that's the same, and I seem to remember that the PTC had a conversation about this and approved option A, is that right?
That, that's correct.
Yeah, so, so the PTC didn't consider two options, they only looked at option A. We prepared option B in an attempt to try and come up with a different scenario to help respond to comments. And obtain two potential options that Caltrans would be supportive of. But in talking to different agencies, including East Palo Alto, and in talking to our own transportation division. We determined ultimately that the originally proposed design, option A, we felt would be a better design and is the proposed project.
Okay, thank you. So, I will make the motion now, as I said, I'm generally a fan of raised, separated bicycle and pedestrian lanes. I think this is one small case where the more traditional treatment potentially makes sense. So, as I go to the rest of you, I, I assume and think most of us are probably supportive of this motion. But let's maybe focus on the areas where we don't agree, and I think there may be some question around, around, some questions around the striping. I'll also note it's ten forty, so just to check in, we normally go until ten thirty.
Adrian, did you want to change the striping before we go around?
I'm not going to make that motion, I think I want to hear from the rest of you, that's, that's my interpretation. It was one area I kind of read over in the report this past weekend and was interested in. But staff's thoughtful explanations have helped convince me that I think option A is preferable. But I'll go to my colleagues, so I'm not going to make the motion at the moment. Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yeah, thank you. So, it's clear we need, need to replace the bridge, so we can move upstream and solve the flooding issues. Got a lot of letters supporting alternative one and alternative two. And I do hear the concern about traffic. So, I had a quick question, I mean, do we have the ability to add speed bumps in the future if speeding becomes an issue?
I, I can speak to that at least briefly, and I'm not sure I, I heard it called out loud and clear in our presentation. But one of the mitigations that we have committed to is, is doing a post-construction traffic study. To look at impacts and speeds, and then respond with traffic calming measures, if we see that there are issues that we should address.
Okay, that, that sounds great. So, I did see there are unavoidable impacts during construction. But, you know, reading the EIR, I think I'm able to make the finding of overriding considerations. If the need for safety, to avoid flooding and, and the bridge may be on its slight useful lifespan or all, all sound reasons. And has been pointed out, it sounds like alternative one is, is pretty infeasible, we don't have the funds for it. East Palo Alto hasn't agreed to it. I guess we could potentially consider an assessment district to fund alternative one from the nearby properties, but I, I don't think it's practical, I think it would be quite steep. So, I support alternative two, and I also support option A on the striping. So, reading the EIR, I, I still have some concerns about the construction noise. And so, sound mitigation noise, number one, says that the site has to be quiet from nine PM to six AM. And then, our construction ordinance says, construction goes from eight AM to six PM, Monday to Friday. Nine AM to six PM on Saturdays. So, I guess my question for staff is, why can't we align the noise mitigation with our construction hours, or at least make it closer?
So, the noise mitigation, I apologize that it has those kind of inconsistencies. The reason for that inconsistency is that that's consistent with Caltrans standards. However, the mitigation also states that the project would need to comply with the city standards for whichever city we are working in. And so, those, whatever standards would be more restrictive are, are what we would follow. So, in this case, both the City of East Palo Alto's and the City of Palo Alto's standards are more restrictive than that and would be followed for the project.
I mean, is there any problem being very clear about that and putting that in the motion?
Um, no, I, I don't see any problem with being clear about that in the motion. I'm not sure that we can revise the mitigation measure, but whether it's a condition of approval or in the motion itself, certainly can be accommodated.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, this is, this is Jonathan Lee. You know, Claire can correct me if I'm wrong, but as a, as a standard of our municipal code compliance with the noise ordinance. Would supersede in this regard. You certainly, this conversation reflected in the minutes will be helpful, but the mitigation measure isn't going to allow. Something that would deviate from the, the noise ordinance in the city's municipal code.
I, yeah, and I, I didn't really see conditions of approval, are we approving those tonight as well?
Yeah, I'll let Claire respond, but yes, there's an architectural review determination.
Yes, there, there should have been conditions of approval outlined in the record of land use action.
Maybe that was just a link, or, or I missed it, but, okay, I mean, as long as, as you guys are, are sure that the minutes are sufficient. I just, you know, we've had issues with construction, starting early in the morning, this sounds like it's going to be quite close to some homes. So, I, you know, I definitely don't want to hear it's starting at six AM or anything like that. Okay, but I, I, with that, I think I support the motion as is.
Okay, councilmember Cormac.
Thanks, coming back on the option B, striping. I think I heard the vice mayor say he preferred option A, but then he said at the end he supported the motion.
Well, so, I'm sorry, the motion, yes, you're right, I wasn't looking at letter D. I would support option A, striping, thanks for catching that.
No worries, okay, just trying to make clear, we've got ones and twos and As and Bs. Okay, so, thank you to the vice mayor for going over the overriding considerations. I agree, I can make that finding as well, and should have mentioned it before. And with respect to traffic, I realize there's some members of the community don't believe those studies that have been done. And I'm grateful to Director Eggleston for stating that afterwards, there'll be an assessment, and if there are more changes that need to be made, we can make those at that time. And I, and I hope that's at least somewhat reassuring to the neighbors who would have preferred alternative one. I, I would much rather see option A in terms of striping. And I'll tell you why, I think having a more common design means it's easier for everyone to understand what they're supposed to do where. We've had a few challenges with that in the city in the past couple of years, and I think the simpler we can make, you know, where, where bikes should be and where cars should be and where people should be, the better. And I just wanted to ask perhaps Rafael Mr. Rios, is it a best practice to put bikes and pedestrians together? Because that's what option B looks like to me.
It's not a common practice. We, in option B, we, we show lines that would potentially separate the bikes from pedestrians. Separates that nine-foot raised area into two, four-and-a-half-foot wide segments, but it's a striped line.
Okay, so, in your professional opinion, is option B, option A would be preferred?
In my opinion, I mean, option A follows a lot more standard design practices. Option B would be deviating from a little bit, coming up with a little bit of a unique design.
Okay, I'm familiar with, with the unique and creative designs, and I might, I have a strong preference for option A.
Thank you, next, I have councilmember Koo.
Thank you, so, I actually have some questions. There is. There is on page, packet page two eleven, where it says there's the traffic infusion residential environment analysis. That used the two, the twenty-twenty and twenty-forty scenarios. What are those twenty-twenty and twenty-forty scenarios?
So, we looked at increases in traffic over time, looking at traffic modeling and. And standard increases over time, based on the, based on the general plan for East Palo Alto and Palo Alto. So, that's what was used as the basis for the future year scenario analysis. Is that, is that, answer your question, is that what you were asking?
Right, so those are the growth rates for East Palo Alto and Palo Alto then?
Yes, yeah.
So, in the growth rates for population, housing and jobs, et cetera, it would increase the traffic use? Is that what you're expecting?
So, what we analyzed was that over time implementation of each city's general plan or comprehensive plan. Would result in increases in traffic, because other projects are planned within the vicinity. And those would increase traffic within our region over time. And so, we wanted our analysis to accommodate for that anticipated increase. But the conclusion is that the, the project itself does not result in those increases in traffic.
No, no, the project itself will not, it's what's around it. Another question is, on the newer road, there's an air roof, right? The, it's for, for, for the Jewish religion, when they have to do the Sabbath and they can't drive, they would have to walk following the air roof. I read in the report that there is going to be potentially the need to maybe have to remove the poles and the string. And so, is that something that is going to happen?
Right, so I can answer that, there's a condition of approval to address that. If, for whatever reason, we have to remove the line in the poles, we would provide the poles at sun, before sunset. I think Friday night through the weekend. So, we, we would provide some temporary measure, but we were addressing that through a condition of approval.
Okay, and, and so, the synagogues has been notified, and also, how, how, how are you going to notify people about that? Or residents in the neighborhood?
So, we are working with a rabbi, who's actually giving us the direction on what to do, what they're going to require, so that's included.
Okay, very good, and, and then there's also the staging area that one of the members of the public had mentioned. Can you, can you give me a better idea of, you know, I know Ms. Akaria had said that it's going to be on the center of the road in Newell. But, you know, there's also concern that it might be on private property. So, how, how can you reassure the homeowner that it's not going to be on private property? And that, that it's going to be certainly on public land?
So, for the purposes of construction of this project, we don't have a need to go into private property. Or to go into the encroachment permit area that is behind that fence. We have plenty of room within the actual road right of way to store, stage, any equipment material that is necessary for this bridge construction. How we assure the property? How do we assure the property owner? I think we can reference that we don't intend to remove that wooden fence that separates the public road right of way from the private property.
Oh, I see, so there is that little space between the fence and the banks that is belonging to the creek?
So, just to clarify, sorry, there, there is a portion of the fourteen ninety-nine Edgewood Drive property. That the fence was constructed in public right of. in public right of way. And so the project would move that would temporarily remove that fence to allow enough room for us to work within our right of way. Uh, but we have discussed with the property owner and we are willing to, uh, allow for future encroachment permits, um, to repair that fence in, um, approximately the same location, if not the same location, um, after the project is constructed.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Koo, I think I heard your question and I think maybe Claire, maybe it's the the hour that we're we're working on this. Um, your question is regarding the fence in the backyard. So, yes, his property does go out into the middle of the creek. Uh, but he can't build on it. So that area is a property that, yes, we would be encroaching into that backyard creek area. Uh, Claire's answering a question regards to
No, that's okay. It's just I want to be, I I just want to have clear understanding that there has been something that's worked out with the owner because, you know, that is, while you say it's the right of way, it's, uh, and his fence is right there, but there is something worked out between them, right?
No, not yet. So in regards to the backyard, in regards to the parcel in the creek, that piece is also has an easement on it. So through the process of Santa Clara Valley Water District, which is our contributing, uh, uh, local funding, uh, partner, uh, we will be able to get a permit from them to work within the creek. That's part of the project. Yes, Valley Water. In regards to the piece that Claire referenced adjacent to Newell, we have been meeting, we've met with the property owner, uh, about a year ago. Uh, we've been talking to all the property owners about the impacts that they may have. Purposes of CEQA, we analyze worst case scenario. You know, what what is the worst case that could possibly happen? Uh, we want to analyze worst case scenario versus we are trying our best, which is to try to protect as many things as possible and trying to work within the constraints that are currently public right of way.
Okay, well, thank you so much. That was very clear. I I mean, it kind of puts all the picture pieces in place. I, um, you know, I think I hear, you know, many of the, uh, neighbors who have, uh, come forward. Um, basically, the most important thing to me is to start the project in order to ensure, you know, uh, addressing flood. And this is the very first project that we're going to have to do in order to ensure the upstream ones can be done. So, uh, so that we can reduce the flood, uh, possibilities, but also, you know, in time to, uh, improve, and to improve our rating with FEMA and also to reduce the cost of flood insurance. So, you know, with option one n- not being something that can be funded by Caltrans, I think we, I know we have to do something about this bridge. So, um, I do thank Councilmember Tanaka for bringing up, the option B striping. Now with the option B striping, what I want to know is the shoulder that you mentioned earlier, that's no longer the bike lane. The pedestrian sidewalk is going to be wider now?
Right.
Okay.
We would be raising the shoulder to be, uh, continuous with the sidewalk. And we've talked to Caltrans about whether that's feasible and they would agree to that.
Okay. Help me, um, just, you said you're raising, so in that shoulder, you'll be raising that to be a, uh, sidewalk?
Correct, a multi-use path.
Okay. Now, another question. Can bicycles share the vehicle lane? And be like a, instead of the pedestrian side, can the bicycle share the car lane?
The car lane? Uh, option B does not propose to do sharrows on the travel lane.
I think Raphael is joining us, so maybe Raphael can help to answer it.
Yeah, I know option, option B doesn't have that, but I was just kind of asking the question. Would that be possible to be shared vehicle and bicycle?
Um, I think a a technicality in the in the design B that we came up with um, is to kind of create the raised platform. It would technically be ending the bike lane and and having a cyclist go on to the to the shared area. And in which case, if we don't have a bike lane, um, by the California Vehicle Code, cyclists can legally share the share the travel lane with with cars. So really gives cyclists an option of either going up to the to the six inch raised level or staying in the travel lane.
Oh, okay. I I kind of like that. So, you know, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of the the neighbors who are living there. I mean, I do have concerns. Um, I I do hear that one of the biggest concern is cut through traffic and the fact is, you know, people are using a lot of different apps in order to find their most easiest route to get through. So, um, you know, things like Waze and Google. So I do have issues with that and I have concerns, huge concerns about cap- cut through traffic through neighborhoods. Um, I do hear that there's children going to school and Newell Road is, uh, one that is used very often. Um, so I think this is a good compromise. So thank you to, uh, Councilmember Tanaka and Councilmember Niss for uh, bringing this forward. Um, and I would support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, thank you very much. Well, I wanted to ask about, uh, option A and option B too. I wonder, yeah, I kind of want to, I kind of want to move the the mouse on it. This, uh, let's see, hang on a second. Is it, is it possible I could have the screen for a minute?
Sure, I can go back to that. Hold on one second.
I mean, I'm on your slide, right?
I think Councilmember Phil Seth actually wants to present, so presenting and he'll share his screen.
Uh, I don't have the screen right now. I think what the clerk's office does.
Oh, okay. Um, well, okay, I'll I'll try verbally. Can we, can I see the slide? It's, uh, I think it's number four with striping options.
You should be able to share, huh, not anymore.
That one. Okay, so if I understand how this works, the the staffs, so you the discussion of the the uh, the one of the concerns between option A and option B was if if a cyclist is moving from left to right here, you can't see my cursor, moving from left to right down here, um, and they want to make a left turn onto woodland. Then if they're in option A, they're either on the shoulder or in the shero. Whereas in option B, they're on sort of this raised, uh, raised section off to the side. Is that?
Correct.
Now, I assume that's the dominant mode of of transportation or traffic if you're a bike, because if you're going down Newell, the jog on Newell, then you turn left here and then you then you hook a right at Newell after, you know, forty feet or something like that. So I assume we we're going to see a lot of that. Okay, and so then the concern is that you have to cut farther through the intersection, uh, if you're in option B than option A?
Um, correct, you would you would have to come off of the sidewalk, like as if you were coming off of a sidewalk type ramp.
That's what I, that's what I thought. And so I was just thinking of this and I started looking at the picture. This is a four-way stop. Right? So if you're on option B and you're on your bicycle and you're on this ramp, you sort of go around the the a little bit to the to the right and then get off on the ramp, but then you have a stop sign, so you stop there. And then you cut across to the other side. And depending on where the stop sign is on the other side, you may actually end up behind the stop sign uh, on woodland, although if you cut, if you cut, you know, if you if you cut into the intersection, then you miss the stop sign. So imagine a scenario in which a car pulls up to the sun on option B, a car pulls up to the stop sign of, uh, onto woodland. And then the car is planning on making a right turn. And then somebody's on a bike on this raised section off to the side. And they're supposed to stop at the stop sign. But if it's a kid and doesn't stop at the stop sign at the exact time the car's making the right turn, then you potentially have a tragedy. Which I think is somewhat similar to what happened at Cal Ave and El Camino a few months ago. Whereas in option A, if they're, I mean, it could theoretically still happen if they're in the the shoulder, but if they're in option A in the shero, that's much, much less likely. Is that, is that a, is that a correct sort of thought process?
I don't want to speculate on what happened.
Yeah, I understand.
At the other intersection.
Let me put it a different way. There's a danger of getting right hooked if you run the stop sign.
Yeah, if if in option B, um, somebody ignores, there there would also be a should add. I mean, so it would be considered an always stop. And there would be a, um, a separate stop sign. I'm not sure that, uh, you can see it kind of mounted on the railing of the bridge. And yeah, and we would expect a cyclist to obey the the stop sign and pavement markings. And if they ran through a stop sign, then yeah, potent- there's potential for issue.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay, that's, I mean, I have a good different question, right? Sort of a different way. Has staff got an opinion on which one is safer for bike bicyclists, option A or option B?
I mean, I I think if if the traffic laws are obeyed, they can both functional function in a safe manner.
Okay, well, I'm leaning on option A because I, you know, this image of, you know, I I think the the left turn there is going to be the dominant mode, right?
I I I do think with option A, it's a more traditional layout that more people are used to knowing what to do.
I understand.
And, okay, I mean, I want to chime in, bring back that this was discussed with East Palo Alto Director of Public Works. And again, he looked at both options and for the items that you, everybody's been discussing and presenting, again, he also chose option A.
I understand, okay. Um, let me ask another question. Okay, so much of the concern we heard tonight, in fact, I think pretty much all of it, right, uh, on on the on, uh, on al- on alternative two, was the idea that that if you widen this bridge, then it's going to be a cut through traffic magnet for for commuters, right? I mean, I assume that Waze sees this as a two-lane bridge anyway, and so sends people down there, but they may learn or something. So if that in fact turns out to be true, uh, what would we do uh, to mitigate the cut through traffic, uh, i- if it should appear?
Um, so going back to the earlier discussion, I think what really generates traffic coming here is the time savings. And I think the difference in time savings between the alternatives is relatively negligible and and when delays really increase on university is when you start to see the shifts over to Newell.
Sure, of course.
And and as as, uh, Public Works Director Eggleston mentioned earlier, you know, either immediately after the project or years down the road, we could, we could evaluate the traffic conditions and consider various traffic calming measures.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, there's calming and there's sort of, there's there's sort of speed and there's volume. So we put in speed bumps and stuff like that, you know, I assume that would have an impact on the speed, but if, but I mean, i- if there's a volume issue, right, then then we'd have to try some then we'd have to use some other kinds of tools. I mean, are there such tools?
Well, there's a theory that doing some speed measures will increase the travel time and encourage drivers. There there are other measures that would, I mean, I I know a while back, the the city turned against like um, turn restrictions or traffic diverters and stuff, um, could be reconsidered in the future, but it's not currently a tool that we're using.
So, so I just want to clarify that the, um, uh, analysis that we would do down the road would not look at, um, how it, traffic has increased. I mean, traffic is anticipated to increase over time with or without this project under all of these alternatives. And the analysis that was prepared explains that, um, in detail and, uh, accommodates for that in our analysis. So
Yeah, I understand.
Doing, doing an analysis down the line of how this it, that this project has impacted traffic. I don't know how feasible that would be because, uh, traffic will have increased over time for other reasons too.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but I think and and maybe it it the the discussion is maybe slightly broader than we got, uh, agendized tonight, but you know, there is sort of a, you know, public policy issue of, you know, do you want to keep the traffic on the arterials or do you want to allow to go through the neighborhoods?
So I, I guess what I would just say to that is that the project did not have substantial changes in delay or improvements in delay at intersections. Um, to the extent that it would improve or re- um, reduce, uh, delays at intersections in a way that would, uh, change traffic patterns. Um, encouraging people to come through Newell versus another intersection.
Understand, well. You know, I I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this. Let, let's get this built before the next flood. But I'm gonna, uh, my my preferences for option A, striping option A. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Phil Seth. Before we go for a second round, I'm gonna move that we, I'm gonna make a friendly amendment to change option B to option A. And is that accepted by the maker and seconder?
Mayor, I wish, here's what I suggest. Well, let's just separate option D or the letter D out and we vote on that separately.
And sure, I mean, I, but then I'm just making an amendment, so.
Yeah, so basically just make it separate and we can vote that either up or down.
Greg, where are you on it?
So, um, I'm, I'm still option B and for a couple of reasons.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
I think you're right. Let's separate it, yeah.
I'm making an unfriendly amendment, so. Thank you. So there's an unfriendly amendment to change letter or option B to option A. If you want to speak on this, please raise your hand, but I really suggest we just get on with it. It's eleven fifteen. I think we're all kind of tired. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so let me, let me tell you why I still support option B. So I I take this probably maybe once a week because I go to Home Depot on my bike. And, um, you know, I, you guys, um, no low kids or had kids. Um, and most elementary school kids are going to ride the sidewalk. I I know there's the idea that, yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna take the road, you're gonna be, you want to take the shero. But young kids, I mean, even a sixth grader probably is not going to take the road. I mean, they're gonna ride the sidewalk. That's what's going to happen. And so this makes it, this makes it, uh, tougher for them, option A. Um, as, uh, Councilmember Koo pointed out, if you want to take the road, you still can. That's still legally, uh, correct. Um, and if you're gonna run this, if you're gonna run that stop sign, you have a bigger problem. It's it's a kind of a T intersection and get hit by another car. So it's even with a person making a right turn or you just, if you don't beat a lot, you're gonna have, you have other issues besides a right hook. And, uh, the the thing is, is that, um, for me, if there's a stop sign there, I'll just cross the street at that crosswalk. Because then I can just make a right turn on to woodland to go over the East Palo Alto Bridge. So to me, it just seems that this is still So to me, it just seems that this is still a safer option versus option A. And this is a intersection I take quite often. And I, I think fundamentally, the, the biggest issue, especially for smaller kids, is that paint on the ground really isn't protection, protective bike lane is. You know, you have a two-ton car against a bike, it's really no competition. But if you have a thirty-pound bike against a pedestrian, it's not that bad to have that shared versus sharing the vehicle traffic. So, so bike safety to me is still far better with option B. But the other part, and this, it's what I think everyone that called in who was really concerned about this project, is the cut through traffic is the speeding. This is, option B is a much more plausible, plausible option. It's only two feet wider. So it goes eighteen feet to twenty feet. So it's only two feet wider. It's a compromise compared to having that, having a width that's why, much more, much wider than, than, than what's there right now. We could get more neighborhood acceptance. So to me, it just seems better to go with option B.
Councilmember Ku, do you want to speak to this amendment?
Yes, thank you. So earlier, somebody made an argument that, or someone said that the agencies, Caltrans, EPA, I mean, East Palo Alto and Palo Alto, they liked option A, you know, alternative two. But the thing is, at the end of the day, you know, how about what the residents in that neighborhood liked? You know, they liked something less, which was not doable because it was alternative one, which had no funding. But the main point is also that we have to get that bridge built in order to alleviate the flood issue. So again, you know, this is listening to what the residents over there are saying and their concerns about safety. Because it's more than just, you know, having a transportation route, making it more easy for people to get in and out. But it's also about safety and that's a big part of it, which is why I'm still gonna stick with, which is why option B is still the, the better compromise. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, thank you. I'll just note Councilmember Ku, as we asked staff earlier, option A is the one that was presented to residents and presented as part of the project. Okay, let's vote on the amendment and then the main motion. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss. Was that a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ku.
No.
Councilmember Tanaka.
No.
Okay, the amendment passes five to two, so option B is changed to option A. And I'm gonna ask that we now vote on the main motion. Just a quick check with staff. This is everything you need to move this project forward.
Correct.
Okay, let's all vote and move.
Mayor, I'm gonna ask you to split the motion.
I'm not gonna split the motion. We just voted on.
I think Molly, can you speak on this? Because I think if the matrix split motion, they have to.
Thank you, Councilmember. If, if the motion can be split and there's a request that your rules provide that that be done, but I'm not seeing that the motion can be split. Where do you propose to split it?
On H.
Which we just voted on. I'm, I'm disinclined to split.
No, that, that, that issue, it, it's one project, so it's not, it's not separable.
We can't, we can't have the bridge and the roadways without a striping plan, which we voted. Okay, Councilmember Cormac.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DuBois.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Councilmember Niss.
Yes.
Councilmember Ku.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes unanimously. Thank you to everyone who stuck with us until eleven twenty. Thank you to the members of the community for calling in and joining us and your, your input. And thank you to staff for that presentation and also to our partners at Caltrans, East Palo Alto and Valley Water. We appreciate your partnership. So that is the end of our action calendar. There are no other items for the night. We just moved to our adjournment. So it is eleven nineteen, adjourn this meeting and hope you all stay safe, healthy and well. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.